James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned, the Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
There's Tommy. Bonnie.
Yep.
Everybody ready? Team ready?
Sure.
Okay. I call this meeting a James City County Board of Supervisors regular meeting on December 12th, 2023 at 5:07 PM. Sorry folks, we're running a little late, but we had a swearing in ceremony, took a little longer and we're glad we did because it was, we got a great team, ready to go. So, roll call please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is Vice Chair to the Board. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District and is Chair to the Board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the Board.
Thank you, sir.
All right, before our moment of silence, our pledge leader will be introduced by Ms. Sadler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, our pledge leaders tonight are two very special young men. Come on up, guys, they happen to be my grandsons, Evan and Connor Schultz. I'm a little partial, thank you guys for being willing to do this tonight. They're both straight A students at Providence Classical School. Evan is a 10th grader and enjoys archery, drama class, fly and saltwater fishing, target shooting, football, among a whole lot of other things they enjoy doing with their granddad. Connor is a 7th grader, he also participates in after-school archery, enjoys fly fishing, hiking, football and basketball. They're the sons of our daughter Lauren and actually live in the Powhatan District, but I get the honor of introducing them tonight. So after a moment of pledge, a moment of silence, if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Would y'all join us in some photos, please?
Yes.
It's a photo op night, y'all. It's all about photos tonight. I've got all the goodies here. Look, they gave us all kinds of stocks and stuff. Guys.
All right, next we'll move into presentations, and the first set of presentations is the chairmanship award, and that's where the Chairman of the Board gets to pick someone or a couple people in the community, and so I've selected a few, and I'll ask Eric Stone. Where'd Eric go? He was right in the back, if he could come.
He's right there, second row.
Ah, I saw you standing back there. I'll read the award, do you want to say anything?
Go right ahead.
So, this person that, that I recommended to Chairman Hippel has done a fantastic job in the community, working with all people in the community in Williamsburg, James City County. They put together a tremendous group that assist young people with education, doesn't matter what class they are, or whether, what side of the track they're from, but she's put together a tremendous team, and, and I recommended her for this, and I really appreciate the Chairman going along with my recommendation, so I'll let him introduce this person.
Jacqueline Williams, would you come forward?
All right, Jacqueline Williams, and Village Initiative, Jacqueline Williams is the founder and executive director of the Village Initiative grassroots 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to equality and justice in the Williamsburg, James City County schools and surrounding community. And whereas the Village Initiative takes a four-pronged approach to social change focusing on advocacy, school programming, community outreach, and early literacy, and prevention or preservation of black, local black history. And whereas since its founding in 2016, the Village Initiative has engaged in sustaining policies, advocacy, and the school programming has included tutoring, mentoring, and leadership programs for K-12 schools, and partnered to integrate local black histories and members of the black descendants community into the classroom. And whereas the Village Initiative has worked, or has worked and been recognized at the state level with a 2020 commendation from the Virginia State Assembly, and at the national level with a social justice award from the Al Qaeda Delta Society Honoring Society, as well as through numerous local awards and honors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia hereby recognize Jacqueline Williams and the Village Initiative, and present this award as a token of appreciation for their dedicated service to the county and the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the folks from the Board of Supervisors. I'm Jacqueline Richforth Williams. We're just so pleased, little did we know when we started in 2016, we started to, you know, for change, and to do good for all children in our community. And little did we know that we would do so much work, and it would be so well received by our entire community. When you think about being honored by the people who govern your county and your community, and the legislators at the state level, it means so much to know that we are really doing what we set out to do, which is to make equity and equality for all students throughout this, throughout not only our community, but our entire country. And it just means so much, the team is amazing. We have such an amazing team, so many amazing supporters, so many of you guys are here this evening. We love you guys and we thank you, and I can't say enough about the work that goes into it, and the people that do the work. Right now with our early learning and literacy program, we distribute 500 books a month to the children and students of Williamsburg, James City County, so I do encourage you to contribute in some way, be it monetarily or through donating a book. And again, we just thank you so much for this honor, so many of our friends are here, and we are so grateful. I'm looking at John and I'm thinking about Juneteenth, because we were able to bring the national Miss Juneteenth here to be crowned in your city, whether you know it or not. She was crowned on the state level and went on to win the national title. So we are just so honored to be able to do the work and bring things to our community that mean so much to each and every one of us, and to preserve local African-American history, to tell the stories, because African-American history is American history, it's the history of all of us, and to be able to share it and make sure that children, generations from now, will still look back and see the work that we've done. And I hope and pray that we do a good thing, and I thank you all so very much. And you can visit our website, thevillagewjcc.org, and we do have a donate button, and I would be, and I would be remissed, there are a couple of people I do want to acknowledge, all of my friends and the people that do the work with the village, they're here, and you guys know who you are and I love you, but there are a few people, my mom is here, she doesn't get to come to a lot of things with me and my aunt, and so, and you know, when you think about what you do and who you become, it's about your, your village, and they are my original village, my mom and my aunt, and they're sitting here this evening. And there's another lady, you all may not know that's a part of my village, and I'm looking in her eyes, I just love her so much, she was my Girl Scout troop leader, and that's Ms. Peggy Borman, and I, so I just want to say, you know, it takes a village, and, and you just never know, and I thank you all, and I thank you, and thank you guys, and I hope that you all will follow our work and be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Greg, Greg Thompson? There he is, there he is, I should have known, bald guy in the back. That's right. How you doing, buddy? All right, we've got a little surprise here, we're doing a little, little different. Greg was coming up to get an award, but we've made a little change on that, haven't we?
Yes, sir, we have.
All right, and you want to call the nominee up for this award, and, and if you want to start in here, and I'll catch it right here, and we'll double team this.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Hippel.
Can you explain a little bit about?
Yes, sir, I'd like to share a story with y'all real first, about a young man, ever since he was old enough to walk, he wanted to be a firefighter. And that dream came true for him when he was right out of high school, and he is now a career firefighter for James City County. Fast forward a few years, he's, meets this young lady, and they fall in love. And little does he know, this young lady's mother, who lives in Minnesota, has some health issues. And Colton, will you come up, please? And Glenda France, please, Colton's mother. So the way the story goes, Colton meets this young lady, Kylie is her name, and they fall in love, and Colton meets Kylie's mother, who has some health issues, and needs a kidney replaced. Out of the goodness of his heart, Colton gets tested and is a perfect match. So he travels to Minnesota for all the testing, travels to Minnesota for the surgery, and donates a kidney to Kylie's mother. I got the pleasure of meeting Kylie's mother over Thanksgiving, and they are watching this tonight from Minnesota, and she is doing awesome. She is going to be at a wedding this May, so we are proud. And Colton, whereas Colton Thompson has been with James City County Fire Department since August 2015, and he is currently a firefighter three, and whereas Mr. Thompson has served as a member of the Marine Incident Response Team and a peer fitness team, and whereas Mr. Thompson's dedication to the community in saving lives has extended to giving life through living kidney donation, and whereas when Mr. Thompson learned that his fiance's mother needed a kidney replacement transplant, he immediately had himself tested to see if he was a match, and when the doctors informed him that he was a perfect match, there was never a doubt about his decision to donate his kidney. And whereas in June 2022, Mr. Thompson underwent surgery to donate his kidney to Ms. Deb Schottenfeld, and whereas Ms. Schottenfeld is now healthy and strong, and considers Mr. Thompson her guardian angel. And whereas the noble acts of living kidney donations, donors do not end after donation, their gift represents more than one life saved. Their actions live on to inspire the community to give back in bigger and bolder ways.
Now therefore be it resolved that I, the Chairman of the James City County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize Colton Thompson and present this award as a token of appreciation for his dedicated service to the county, and for the selfish act as a life, as a living kidney donor.
I know, I know you don't like praise.
Um, thank you, definitely wasn't expecting this. I was told that my dad was receiving an award, and that's why I should come here. So, don't really have anything prepared, but, uh, I'd like to thank my parents, my stepparents, my family that's here, the fire department in James City County for giving me the ability to do this. They put me on light duty for multiple months as I recovered, thankfully it was a great recovery. Most importantly, thank you Captain Harris. Captain Harris is probably one of the best people I've ever met in my life, he's a mentor, he's my captain currently, but more importantly, he's one of my best friends, and he's supported me no matter what, and continues to do so, and I know that's one person that will always be there for Kylie and I. If we get anything out of this, look into living organ donation, or check that box next time you go to renew your license, because it can change a life in an instance. So thank you, everybody.
I just want to share a little bit, you know, it's, we spend a year to get to the chairmanship award and all that, and I just want to say how much we appreciate everything everyone in our community does, and all the work that they do for James City County, and it just so shows a level of our staff's commitment, not only to the citizens of James City County, but to anybody in need, and we all ought to be extremely proud of the employees and citizens we have in James City County, so thank you.
Can I just take a moment and say, first of all, great choices, but just take this as a reminder that we have a young man in the Berkeley District who is desperate for a living donor, for a liver and a kidney, oh, positive or negative. If you are at all interested in learning more, you know of anyone that might be interested, please reach out to me on my county email, and I will connect you with the family. Thank you.
We have three more presentations, and the first one I'll ask.
This is a proclamation for Delegate Michael P. Mullen, for his service in the state legislature, and expressing appreciation for his representation of James City County. Come on forward, Mike. Whereas Delegate Mulligan was elected to the Virginia House of Delegates in 2016, where he was continuing, has continuously served for the past eight years. And whereas in the House of Delegates, Delegate Mullen served as Vice Chair for the Rules Committee, as well as the Labor and Commerce Committee, the Counties, Cities and Towns Committee, and the Courts of Justice Committee. And whereas as a former Assistant Commonwealth Attorney, Delegate Mulligan utilized his criminal justice background to advocate for children and families, and improving the criminal justice system. Whereas during his tenure, Delegate Mullen, Mulligan, Mullen, Mulligan, my Mulligan.
Yeah.
Delegate Mullen was, was an effective advocate for business and economic development incentives, as well as partnering for the local colleges and universities to ensure a skilled workforce throughout the region. And whereas Delegate Mullen was instrumental in promoting historical markers in the Commonwealth to highlight businesses in Virginia listed in the Green Book, which was published from 1936 to 1967, as a guide directing black motorists to shops, hotels, restaurants, and gas stations that would serve them in the deep south. And whereas Delegate, whereas James City County is thankful for Delegate Mullen's leadership and responsiveness to the issues of our community, and appreciates his commitment to a balanced approach to solving issues, understanding the importance of working in the middle to accomplish things on both sides of the political aisle. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, that's here, to hereby commend Delegate Michael Mullen for his dedicated service to the county and, and the community. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City to be, Virginia to be affixed, this 12th day of December, 2023, and is signed by Michael Hippel, Chairman of the.
Well, I, I just want to say how much I am incredibly grateful for the opportunity to have served the people of James City County for these past seven years, and I want to, in particular, thank my wife Rebecca, and our four boys for doing me the honor of sharing this time together. And so I want to share this dais with two other extraordinary people who I think will be up here momentarily, and so thank you all very much for this wonderful and extraordinary honor. Thank you so much.
All right, next I'll ask John McGlinnan to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I need some help. All right, so this is a proclamation honoring Senator T. Montgomery Monty Mason, for his service in the state of, state legislature, and an expression of appreciation for his representation of James City County. Whereas prior to serving in the Virginia State Senate, Senator Mason was twice elected to the House of Delegates in the 93rd District before winning a special election for the first state senate district. And whereas in the state senate, Senator Mason served on the Commerce and Labor Committee, Privileges and Elections Committee, Rehabilitation and Social Services Committee, Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources Committee, and the General Laws and Technology Committee. And whereas Senator Mason also served as Virginia Legislative Representative to the Atlantic Foundation, the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Committee, Commission, the State Executive Council to the Office of Children's Services, and the State Water Commission. And whereas Senator Mason will be remembered for his work, for his his work, for his many accomplishments, uh, and his dedication to serving the citizens of James City County. And whereas James City County is thankful for Senator Mason, Mason's leadership and representation, uh, to the issue, uh, for the issues of our community, and appreciate his, his commitment, uh, to a balanced approach to solving issues, understanding the importance of working in the, in the middle of the, uh, uh, in the middle to accomplish a change, things for both the sides of the political aisle. We now therefore be it resolved that Michael Hippel, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, uh, James City County, Virginia, hereby commend Senator Monty Mason for his dedicated service to the county and to the community. Uh, and witness whereof, uh, he's, uh, signs this on this 12th day of December, 2023.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. You know, it was a, excuse me, it was a privilege of a lifetime to have served in this role and to have the opportunity to work on behalf of and with so many great people in this community. I, I, the elected officials here in James City County, the incredible staff, police, fire, that served this county really are some of the best. And they worked very hard with your intentions and your thoughts in mind. We may disagree. We did not always agree politically. We did not always agree philosophically. Um, but I will hope that future delegations of members of the House of Delegates and the state senate will work together as well and become as close as the three of us here tonight have been. So while we have contentious issues, thank you for showing up. Thank you for having your voices heard. But understand the folks here are trying to make the best decisions, trying to do what's right by this county, and trying to do what's right for the future of this region. And we all pull together and enjoy doing it. Thank you so much for the honor. Thank you so much for the recognition. And I enjoyed working with each and every one of you. Thanks.
Senator Normant, come on down. Good evening, sir. This is a proclamation, Senator Thomas K. Normant Jr., for his service in the state legislature and expression, expressing appreciation for his representation of James City County. Whereas Thomas Normant Jr. served on the James City County Board of Supervisors, representing the Roberts District from January 1988 through December 1991. And whereas Thomas Normant Jr. was elected to the Senate of Virginia in 1992 and has continuously served for the past 31 years. And whereas as a member of the Senate Judiciary, Finance and Appropriations, Rules and Commerce and Labor Committees, Senator Normant regularly works on legislation to make our community safer and to ensure that Virginia remains the best state in which to raise a family and do business. And whereas throughout his tenure, Senator Normant earned a reputation as one of the Commonwealth's most effective legislators and was elected by his colleagues to serve as the Majority Leader of the Senate Republicans. And whereas Senator Normant will be remembered for his work, his many accomplishments, and his dedication to transparency in government, and his advocacy of higher education. And whereas James City County is thankful for Senator Normant's leadership and responsiveness to the issues of our community and appreciates his commitment to a balanced approach to solving issues, understanding the importance of working in the middle to accomplish things on both sides of the political aisle. Therefore, now be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, hereby commend Senator Thomas K. Normant Jr. for his dedicated service to the county and to the community. And witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City, Virginia, to be affixed on this 12th day of December, 2023. Congratulations.
Uh, Sue, thank you very much. Actually, uh, my odyssey in public service began on the James City County Board of Supervisors. And I'll share a very quick story with you. I was minding my own business, uh, having lunch over at the Sportsman's Grill with a late friend of mine, Merrill Harfield. And at that time, the Roberts District was represented by a guy named Bill Brown. And he was, uh, working for Anheuser-Busch and they were going to transfer him to Columbus, Ohio. And he walked up to me, he said, Tommy, um, I'm getting transferred to Columbus, Ohio. How would you like to run for the Board of Supervisors? I went, what are you talking about? What are you talking about? And foolishly, and this is how, a slip of a tongue can change your life. I said, if you can't find anybody else, come back and talk to me. You know, that's sorry SOB. I know he never asked another human being. And little did I know that, uh, 36 years later, after a wonderful opportunity in public service, um, that I, I would be here. And I want to say, especially you, Mr. Chairman, and your colleagues, it was really a transition to go from the Board of Supervisors, uh, to Richmond, 50 some miles away. And that was back in the days before we had email and everything. And I used to really enjoy the opportunity to serve on the Board of Supervisors for a couple of reasons. Jay Everson was here in those days. And it was so rewarding to know when I voted on a particularly controversial rezoning case, that by the time I drove three minutes, three minutes to get home, citizens were knocking on my door complaining about my vote. You know, so you got that instant feedback. And then when I went to the senate, of course, we were in Richmond and, uh, you didn't have that immediate contact with the citizens, uh, that you do in local government. And so, Mr. Chairman, I thank you and your colleagues for your service because you have made James City County a better place. I've been very blessed with my opportunities and privileges serving in the Senate of Virginia, but my heart has always been in James City County. I love James City County. Uh, I grew up here. My kids were educated here and it's just been a blessing. So I thank you very much for the, for the recognition, sir.
All right. That takes care of all the presentations and we'll move into public comments. I'll open up public first. Keith Sadler, first speaker.
Doug? There he is.
I didn't forget you. There's a little game we were playing. Right, y'all?
You know, it's my pleasure to be here this evening and I have some notes, so I sort of stay on task with what I'd like to say. But I really want to thank Supervisor Sadler for her years of service with the county and the James City County Service Authority. No one really knows the time and effort it takes to do this job unless you've been in the role. And I've watched over the years as she worked to make sure she understood the issues at hand to make a decision that she felt was representative of her district. This role as a supervisor for James City County is never as easy as it first appears. No matter which way you vote on a topic, somebody likes it, somebody doesn't, and some in the middle probably didn't care on that particular issue. I want to personally thank Supervisor Sadler for taking a chance and hiring me as a James City County Administrator five years ago. You go through an interview process and you never really know what you get. Is the person coming to work or is the person part of the hiring process? Uh, and I will tell you, she is quick. I very much appreciate her candor and approach and her willingness to take a chance on me. She has been quick in telling me when she agrees or disagrees with some of my decisions or recommendations. But even when she didn't agree with what I was recommending or doing with the county, she was always pleasant to talk with. And Sue, I really, really appreciate that relationship that we have. I also know that her family is extremely important to her. I have heard stories about all of them, mostly good. Um, but in all of them, she expressed how, how proud she was of something you had done, or how much she enjoyed the time she spent with you. And so I just want to thank you for allowing your wife, your mom, your grandmother, to spend so much time with us for so many years. I know that her role as a supervisor has taken her away sometimes, but I also know that she is always on your mind. So Sue, I would like to say thank you from me. I would turn it over to Mr. Powell for a few comments as well. But thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Doug Powell and I am General Manager of the James City Service Authority. Most of you know our local elected officials as the Board of Supervisors, but, uh, by virtue of their election as members of the Board of Supervisors, they also become members of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. During the eight years of Ms. Sadler's, uh, public service on the Board of Supervisors, she has also been, served as eight years on the JCSA Board of Directors. She's been chairman of the JCSA Board of Directors for four of those eight years. Uh, she was chairman in 2018 when the James City Service Authority first became an independent organization. And so she led us through that process and that effort. She was chairman in 2019. She was chairman in 2020 during COVID, uh, and certainly helped guide us through everything that we were facing as, as, uh, part of that issue. And then more recently, she's been serving as chairman, uh, during the current year, uh, 2023. So I just want to say to Ms. Sadler, you know, for all of your eight years, thank you for your guidance and support for me personally and for the organization as a whole. Um, we are much better off, um, because of your efforts and, uh, we will miss you very much. Um, uh, and, uh, just want to wish you and your family, uh, the very best, um, in the future and, uh, certainly, um, hope to continue to work with you in other ways, uh, in the future. So, uh, Ms. Sadler, just thank you very much.
All right. Now here comes the good stuff. No, um, I've got to, I've got to hand it to Sue because when I got on the board, Sue was sitting out in the back there and, uh, Keith was sitting out there. And, and, um, there was a many days she came up to the podium to let us know what we weren't doing, what we need to take care of, what we need to look at, why are we spending this, what are we doing there? And once she got on the board, she changed a little bit. She was still concerned about what we're spending, what we're doing and everything else. But she changed a little bit realizing that there are certain things we can do and certain things we can't do, and certain things that we do maybe for something else. And, um, I can hand it to her, when she puts her teeth into something, they're in it. And she will go after that and she will make sure, and she'll call me up every night and then she'll say, okay, I talked to Scott, I talked to Adam, I talked to Paul, I talked to Jason, and, um, I'm still wondering about this and this and this. And, uh, she would gather all her facts, all her information prior to ever sitting in this seat. You never knew exactly what her vote would end up being until she voted on the seat here. But she gathered up all the information she could possibly gather. And if she was going to go after something, she went after it with full force and full vigor. Even when her family struggled with items that needed, that were Family Matters and all that, she continued. Through COVID, she continued. And I've got to hand it to her. She has done a very well and a professional job on this board. We are definitely going to miss her on this board. And, um, I know that she'll, she's ready to retire and do some other things with her family. She said, look, I'm missing my grandchildren. I don't have time to spend time with my husband, my daughter, and, and want to spend time with them. And, um, I want to just take a little break and, and take it easy for a little while. And I think she deserves that. And, and all the service that she's done for James City County, it is amazing. Her care is for the citizens of James City County. Sue, thank you very much.
I'm overwhelmed. I have my tissues. Michael said I could share. Couple of things. I just have some people I need to say thanks to. So if you would indulge me just a few minutes because I, there's a lot of people that I need to, to reach out to, to say thanks. Well, it's been an honor and a privilege to have served over the last eight years. First of all, to my colleagues on the board. I thank you for conducting the people's, I have to read it because I'm scared. I'm going to forget something because I'm so emotional tonight. Thank you for conducting the people's business with kindness and respect. I appreciate the great working relationships and friendships. And I trust that the next four years will be met with professionalism and respect. The staff and the citizens all benefit from a board who works well together. Thank you and congratulations to Ms. Barbara Knoll. Thank you for being willing to run. She'll be taking my seat in a few weeks. And I know, I know your colleagues on the board will be great to work with. And you'll be an excellent community leader representing the Stonehouse District. Thanks. Appreciate you. James City County is very blessed to have amazing people who work for you, the citizens. I can't name all staff, but to Scott, Adam, Doug, I'm going to cry, Jason, Brad, Paul, Chris Johnson, Grace, Teresa, there's too many people to name. All of your teams, I can't thank you enough for the enormous, stop now, it's only going to get worse, amount of help over the years, especially on those Mondays before Tuesday board meetings. They know we're on the phone with them all day long with, with me anyway. And Jason, I gave Barbie your phone number, so she'll be calling you for help. She's got your number. So thank you all so very, very much. You all do a first-class job for this community and we're very blessed to have you all. There are many citizens who participate, engage, and help us along the way. There's a person I'd like to thank for sharing his wisdom and knowledge on land use, policy, budgetary issues, basically everything that we do. I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude to Mr. Jay Everson for always being willing to help and provide much-needed information. I thank you very much for everything. Many thanks to the citizens of the Stonehouse District for entrusting me as your representative. It's truly been an honor to serve. All right. Let me get my tissues ready. Bodily, but most importantly, huge thank you to my family for your help and support from the very beginning, which was over nine years ago. My husband Keith told me when we were discussing me running for office years ago, he said, go for it. You can do it. And then he helped with door knocking and campaign events and working the polls. And I think he's still in physical therapy as a result of all those hills you have to climb in the Stonehouse District. But then, then he had dinner waiting for me after some of those long Tuesday night board meetings. It's been an amazing journey and I thank you for your love and support. Love you. To my daughter Lauren, oh, I can't even look at her. Your help, patience, and words of encouragement mean the world to me. You're an amazing mom and role model and you've worked extremely hard to be where you are now, even through very difficult times. I greatly admire you and I thank you. greatly admire you, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. My grandsons, they're like, yay, it's my turn. Evan and Connor, thank you for all of your help that you've provided me from a different perspective. I hope this has been a wonderful learning experience for you, for you both. You've participated in campaigns, you worked the polls. They were this big when they helped me run. They were working the polls, little curly-headed things way back in the day. You watched election returns, you learned about local, state, and federal government. And it's a joy having discussions with the both of you about land use and policy and volunteerism and community development. Our rides home from school, we talk about all of those things. They're more well-first than, I don't know, some grownups I know. They do a great job. For the very, those very reasons, those very reasons of everything that you've learned along the way, it's been, for the, it's been well worth all of the very, very many hours that I've put into this position. And it takes a lot of time doing this. But it's been well worth every second just for what you guys have learned. Always remember, boys, you stand firmly on your faith, on your values, and your principles, and you're going to grow up to be great men. And with that, I thank you all. God bless you all. God bless James City County, and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas. And thank you. Thank you all. I love it. My family, you don't get to sit down with, one more photo op, please. It's photo night.
I knew I was on deck.
Welcome back.
I'm Keith Sadler, 9929 Mountain Berry Court, Tullana. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members. I guess the first thing I want to say is, I'm a very fortunate man to be married to Sue Sadler. I'm very proud of. Been quite a while since a Sadler has been up here at the podium. And it's been eight years since my wife Sue ran for Stonehouse Supervisor. She didn't do it because she's a politician. She did it because of those two boys that led the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, our grandsons, to give them, kids like them, as well as adults, a better place to live, to fight for conservative values, rights, and the American dream in James City County. That's what she did. She did it with grace, intelligence, professionalism, and moral character. She never compromised her core beliefs and promises. I want to thank all of those behind the scenes who helped Sue, especially Jay Everson, and numerous staff people for their wisdom, education, and assistance. We leave things in good hands, as you know. Ms. Barbara Knoll will carry the torch in Sue's place and do a great job. Now it's time for a new chapter, more family time and retirement fun. In closing, I will say again, Sue was not a politician, but was and always will be a true patriot. I would ask that the new board work together with professionalism to continue to make James City County a better place. Thanks for your time, service, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Peg Borman?
Good afternoon. Good morning. Board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Reinhammer, Mr. Kinsman. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Peg Borman. I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot. And today, I'm coming again, once again, to talk a little trash. But first of all, I want you to know that my family has taken up a new endeavor, and their gifts are now becoming things recycled. Oyster cells that have been decapaged for ring holders and cans to hold whatever you want to put in it. So it rubs off, I guess. But, but anyway, I just wanted to share those with you, because these are some of the gifts that they've given me this year. But I won't talk about the trash, because it's, as you see, it's out there waiting to be picked up, and it's not going away. It does get picked up, and rest assured that we are disposing of it, but somehow or other, it reappears. But let me give you some good news, too. At our recycling expo and repair fair we had last month, we had thirty, three thousand one hundred and seventy pounds of paper was shredded to be recycled for packing material and so forth. We got 290 pounds of soft plastic bags that were collected, and they won't be decorating the trees out there as much as they were. We have 70 tires that won't be in, that were recycled and won't be dumped in the ditch somewhere to be picked up later. 113 pairs of shoes were collected to give to those in other countries that need shoes, and lots and lots of bags of clothing. Junk luggers collected e-waste. They got a half a truck of things that picked up. Restore collected a half a truck of household and reusable items. We had 31 items that were repaired rather than going into the landfill. Four gallons of compost materials collected, and 200 pounds of glass was also collected for OI. Thanks to all that have volunteered, and those who came out and donated and helped us by participating in all the things that they brought out. Dates to remember is American, Great American Cleanup is March 22nd, 23rd, and 2024. So I mark that on the calendar. And the annual litter cleanup for James City County will be held April 27. And we are going to do a litter index, which will, sometime in February, which will cover the entire county in one day, assessing the amount of litter observed. We will be cleaning up in April. And we had a Citizen and Farmer's Bank in Norwich was our recent award for Clean Business Award. And don't forget, you've got the cards. If you've got the cards, send it into us, because we need all of these. We can, so we can pick a new business next quarter. And remember to reuse, repurpose, or recycle, and happy holidays to each and every one of you.
Thank you. Jay Everson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Everson, 6923 Chancery Lane in Colonial Heritage. I was going to come up today to recognize the fact that Sue Sadler is leaving the board. And she's doing such a good job. I moved from Roos District, no offense, over to the Stonehouse District, so he could be represented by, by her. Not that you were doing bad, but it was, you know, I was really friendly with her. And one of the things I, it kind of struck me with, Mr. Stevens has said, you know, that she's, you know, kind of a direct, if you agree with her or not agree with her. There's a friend of, a friend of ours, and yours too, who says, the best, the best person to people to run for office and get elected are women, because they know how to say no, because they spent their whole lives with their kids saying, no, I don't care what your friends say, you're not, we can't do this. And it was fascinating, not to jerk her kid, Scott, but it was interesting that you mentioned that. I did want to say that it's been a, it was very kind of you to mention me. You're a good friend. I think you've done a great job. And I know that a lot of folks thought when she ran, you know, because she spent two or three years up here, and probably thought she was, be a bomb thrower, and all kinds of crazy stuff going on wherever she sat. And it turned out that, you know, she's kind of normal, you know, and he gets along with folks. I know she's gotten along well with her, our Democratic colleagues here. And that's interesting, and it's, it's good to see. And you've done a good, great job. Sue, and best of luck in your retirement. A board knows what they're going to do all day. Sometimes you call us, a god-awful lot of times in the morning. And there's one other thing on Tommy. You know, you're thinking, Thomas K. Norman? Then who knew? This guy's always Tommy. He's even got a tax named after him. So I don't know how they came up, they should have said Thomas K. Tommy Norman. And he's done a great job for us, too, over the, golly, 36 years. And you ate. Well, God bless you all, and thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Peter Maines?
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Peter Maines. I volunteer with a group called YB Hampton Roads. We advocate for accessible and affordable housing. I wanted specifically to-
Can you give us your address? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. 5410 Beverly Lane in Newtown. Okay. I've been in contact with some of you about the 2019 Workforce Housing Report. And while I appreciate that Mr. Eisenhower and Mrs. Larson have responded with facts about what we have done, I think one thing we could look at is, is reducing or adjusting our parking minimums. For a townhouse in James City County, there's a requirement of 2.5 spaces of off-street parking. So that number seems to have come from a 1985 report. They called the Parking Generation Manual by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Now, 35 years later, the president of that organization had this to say about those recommendations. Parking minimums make some broad assumptions, including the idea that all homeowners can afford a car, want to pay for a parking stall, and that the car is their preferred mode of transportation. This works against many other policies a city creates to encourage sustainable development, promote active transportation, and serve low-income families. And that's the connection to workforce housing. It effectively attacks on building new housing here in the county. So if we don't want to simply do away with the requirements, we could reduce or remove them near, like, say, within a two or three-block radius of a transit stop, a bus stop. We could allow on-street parking to count towards the minimums. And, you know, or we could simply reduce, you know, for, for, say, townhouses and commercial. These are all things to consider, and I, and I hope that we can make Williamsburg a more welcoming place for people of all income levels. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other speaker cards? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And next, we'll move into consent calendars. Tonight's consent calendars consist of amendment and rest, restate corporate service agreements with the Williamsburg Area Transit Authority, and minutes of adoption. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any item, or may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval, roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Next is public comment or public hearings, and S U P dash 22 dash 0027 dot 3426, North Riverside Drive, Family Subdivision, has asked for a withdrawal request. And the applicant has requested withdrawal for this case. And we will go ahead and close the public hearing that was left open from November 14, 2023. So we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. And next, we'll move into an ordinance to amend the reorganization of the Chapter 20 Tax of the Code of the County of James City County by amending Article 1 exemption of certain persons from real estate tax, Section 20 dash 10 qualifications for exemptions. And this case will need to be re-advertized for a later date. And we will open and close the public hearing with no action taken. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and close that, and we'll re-advertize that for a later date. Number three, the ordinance amendment to the reorganization of the Chapter 23 Wetlands of the Code of the County of James City County by amending Article 2 using permit, Section 22 dash 3, permitted use 22 dash 5 applicants, applications, maps, documents to be opened to the public inspection, 20 dash 6, public hearing, 22 dash 7, Wetlands Board Action, and 22 dash 11, permit in writing, and look for addenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's great to see so many people in the audience interested in our Wetlands ordinance tonight. During the most recent session of the General Assembly, several changes to the state's model Wetlands ordinance was made, and these changes are required to be adopted by the county prior to January 2024. The substantive changes really just affect notice procedures for public hearings, which include a reduction in the number of times a hearing must be advertised in the paper from two to one, but then requiring additional publication of the hearing on the county's website, and submitting a copy of the hearing notice to the Wetlands Commission, and they put it on the state webpage. Other required changes include a savings clause in case the paper doesn't run the advertisement, which unfortunately happens more often than not, and a series of housekeeping changes related to agency names. While staffers making these mandated changes, we also included a few housekeeping amendments to our own division names. I recommend adoption of the attached ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Staff?
Mr. Kinsman, these changes in many ways are part of the project that you were working on the last few years with the General Assembly. Is that right?
That's correct. We're doing a series of comprehensive changes to try to harmonize some of the notice procedures and make it easier for all of us to understand when we need to advertise.
I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor, so, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any speaker cards? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and look for the board for decision.
Adoption of the ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, sir. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, read adoption of a concurrent resolution with the City of Williamsburg and York County to create the Historical Triangle Recreational Facility Authority with the initial purpose to lease property from the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, and subsequently construct, construction of an indoor sports facility on the said property. The authority will be governed by the board comprising of six members, with each participating jurisdiction adopting two members, and providing an additional resolution. Mr. Conifax?
How you doing, sir? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Two weeks ago, Mr. Stevens, we had a work session, and most of these slides you saw last week, but I wanted to run through them again before the public hearing. The reason we're here today is the public hearing, we needed to add the names of all the members of the authority and re-adopt that, and that's a public hearing is required for that. So that's what the public hearing is for, but I know others are here. So I thought it would be beneficial to kind of walk through the presentation again for, for everybody's benefit. The original, what is the H, Historic Triangle Recreation Facilities Authority? It's an organization established by the three localities. Appointed are the county administrators and city managers, or city manager, and the Parks and Rec directors, or assistant county administrator in York. We're going to evaluate, which we've started, started in '21. That was when the authority was first established. And we're here today to get, to discuss moving forward with that project. As I said, today's public hearing is to complete, redo the adoption of the resolution, adding the names of the members. And right now, I'd like to walk through kind of a quick summary of the project. As you can see, this is the face of the building. As you can see, this is the face of the building. The original scope of the facility, when we first started, was 160,000 square feet. It included 12 basketball courts, could be converted to 24 volleyball courts, 36 pickleball courts, and other equipment that would service those amenities. The scope changes since the original proposal, as we've added 40,000 square feet. We've got a conversion, a turf conversion system, which would roll out synthetic turf over the entire floor, could be rolled out over half of it or all of it. That would be unique to the state of Virginia, be one of the first, and probably one of the few on the East Coast. So we think that would stand out, would be used internally by our local users as well as others that would come in from out of state for tournaments. This is the location of the building. It's next to the Visitor Center at Colonial Williamsburg. You show, it shows the existing parking lot and the building there. Here's a floor plan. As I said earlier, it's 12 basketball courts, could be converted to 24 volleyball, 36 pickleball, and I think 32 wrestling mats could, wrestling tournaments could also be held here. Here's a picture of the synthetic turf. It would hold a full-size football field or three small soccer fields. This is the performer that was done by Victus. We also have Victus online if there are questions about any of the financial information, if the board has any. With Scenario One talks about the programs that the management firm that we would consider hiring would operate programs. Scenario, Scenario One would be we would run the programs that we are running now, Parks and Rec Departments in the facilities Monday through Thursday, and the weekends would be set up for tournaments to attract large tournaments. Scenario Two would be that, that we would not run the programs that the, the operator would run programs. That would be worked out in our management agreement. Interim budget, the initial budget, when we, before the scope expansion, was 53 million. After the design scope changes, it has now moved to 79 million. Commitment, the locality commitment would be that the City of Williamsburg would fund the construction costs for the building. York County and James City County, which support the operational costs, they could range from 400,000 to 800,000 a year, depending on the revenue. And that could change. The estimates that we have, Victus has provided us, are based on national standards and what they've done comparing it to what we could do here locally. One of the questions that were asked at the previous meeting was how much local tax dollars would be, potentially be generated. As you can see there, these are direct tax dollars that would come back to the three localities. The city would get 222,400 based on the projections, James City County 293,000, and then York 335,000. That's based on the existing tax structure and estimated hotel room nights and visitors. A question from the last meeting surfaced regarding if we built our own facility. And as I mentioned then, back in 2009, we had designed and prepared to put out the bid, the construction of a complex for the War Hill Sports Complex. It would include three basketball courts that could convert to six volleyball courts or 12 pickleball courts. That cost now would be about 13 million to construct that. The numbers used are similar to the square footage cost that we've used on this building, on the new building, as well as I've talked to a few firms that are constructing, designing buildings of similar size in the state or in South Carolina right now. The annual debt for us, if we were to borrow the 13 million, would be just over a million dollars a year for 20 years, and our annual operating cost would be approximately 310,000. I got a question today about what would the revenue potential be for this facility? And I estimate it would be somewhere between 25 and 50,000 if we rented it out for tournaments similar to what we're proposing to do with the, at the new facility. We have members of our team here, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you have at this time. If I can't answer, somebody else will be able to help me.
Questions?
Yeah, just a couple real quick ones. You, you mentioned that there were two different scenarios, and that, I guess, how, how much you had to realize out of operating losses might vary between the two different scenarios. What, when, when is the decision made to pick a scenario or, or some combination of it?
I think right now, the, the authority is leaning towards a scenario where our citizens get to use it through our programs, Monday through Thursday at minimal or no charge. The groups that are apparently using all of our facilities, or minimal charges for programs similar to what we are. That would increase our subsidy if we had it fully run by the management firm where they were running, let's say, for example, the youth basketball program or adult programs, and Parks and Rec Departments weren't running it. They would capture that additional, they would capture that revenue, but it would probably at a cost that I would, you know. So I think that's where we are right now, is we want to make sure that our residents, Monday through Thursday, get to use it at a similar cost that they are now participating in our Parks and Rec programs, both for James City County, York, and Williamsburg. We would all be treated as residents in those programming. So the fees that they're being charged now, we would expect they would be the same for us to continue operating. If the management firm takes it over, we anticipate they're going to have to charge additional funds to, to make it work for them. So that's where we are right now, Mr. Eisenhower, is that we could keep it.
I could add to that. We have talked from the beginning of this hybrid model, that we would want our residents to have usage during the week. But from our consultant and understanding that differences, that's why you have those two scenarios. We have said from the beginning, we wanted the gym space Monday through Thursday. We wanted tournaments on the weekend. But it's just giving you that differential, and our cost does go up if the operator is not able to program space and rent it out during the week as well. And so that is still part of the operating agreement we would negotiate. And the authority is, is interviewing operators. We know the cost, the annual cost for the operation. What will sort of work into the details of how much community use do we get are still the details to work out with our operator.
So for example, we could take, you know, six of the courts and run it through the programs of Parks and Rec, and there could be six courts that the operator could use to generate revenue. So that would be worked out in the, in the contract with the management
I was curious about the decision to expand the size of, of the facility.
A couple, when we were looking at facilities in the state and around the country, you know, looking at what makes an attractive facility for these events, a lot of it is the space between the courts and the netting, and many of them that have 12 courts, you know, that's one of the complaints, is that the courts were too close, that you couldn't. And so the tournament organizers, the people that bring the large events, want more space. So that's a little bit of it. The turf expansion, the turf cost, looking at what's, what's not in Virginia right now, what would attract, what our locals could use, and where we could bring tournaments in. And, you know, if you look at the facility in Virginia Beach, it was a track that they put in there that was different than the, than the basketball courts and the volleyball courts. So we were trying to come up with something. Our consultants thought this would be a good, a good addition. And from looking at around the country, it would stand out. It'd be attractive for us to, to both have the expanded floor space and put the turf system in there. So I would say those are probably two of the larger items.
Is this, it does seem like an exceptionally large facility compared to what many other communities have, yeah?
Uh, I couldn't tell you exactly how many 12-court facilities, but-
I'm thinking more in terms of square footage and-
Excuse me?
I'm thinking more in terms of the square footage.
It's larger.
Is it? I mean, that's-
I, I think there are some larger. We visited some much larger than that one, but yes. I, I don't think it's larger. I'll ask somebody on our team if they want to come up and speak to the size of some of the other facilities.
Mr. McGlynn, I'd also offer that, you know, we do have the court spacing. Some facilities, you have a net that drops down and you're running on courts where you could, the net is all that separates you. As John mentioned, ours will have a significant separation between the courts. Will make for a better player experience, a better bench experience, and a better visitor experience on the other side, sitting on bleachers down near the court. The other part of the expansion and the 40,000 square feet, we as a board talked an awful lot with our design builder, with Victus, the financial consultant, on what other amenities should be in the building that would make it different and make it a good visitor experience. A new facility, we believe, would draw people into the community one time, a great experience in the building, and a great community that supports it and has other things to do, would put us in top of and ahead of many other places these tournaments would consider going. And so this 40,000 square feet, we had, we put things for either some of the athletes that are here, while they have downtime, be in a ninja wall or ropes kind of course, or their siblings that come along. Those would also be amenities our community members could use or rent during the week. We have visited some of these rock walls. They are phenomenal features, and they are from very inexperienced climbers to very experienced. You can make them very hard. They tend to stand in a sort of a square, and they run the length of this room, and there'll be two or three or six different types of features in there. We also added some meeting space. We figured that would be helpful during large events in the facility, but also make it more attractive to the community to rent, to have rooms that can be collapsible and have this lobby area. And so the 40,000 square feet that was added are almost an acre, are those kinds of things. And so that drove a lot of the cost increase from the original scope, as well as the turf system that Mr. Carnifex mentioned. That, that will be unique to the area and do a lot of regional play. We don't expect that to draw tournaments from five or six hours away, but we do expect it to have a pretty strong regional impact and provide a facility that gives it some flexibility that others just don't have. And so those two things drove the cost. It is a large facility. Rick Hibbert with M E B made the president last time. Rick, if there's anything we need to add to that, we'd be happy for you to stand up. If we think we've covered it, then I'm, I'm fine with that as well.
12 courts also drives the square footage. But the benefit of the 12 courts is there's two weekday usage. It can be broken up to do basketball, volleyball, dodgeball, a variety of different sports. And then on the tournament side, it's going to attract the large tournaments that need 12 courts and that are looking for those 12 courts. In terms of the overall square footage, it fits within the footprint of what a 12-court facility should be. They usually range from about 175,000 square feet to about 215,000 square feet, when you try to base it off just the court size. So, but there are much bigger ones. There's ones that are 700,000 square feet, 285,000 square feet. So it fits kind of in the, in the middle. And we try to make this, the space as efficient and effective as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to, to get a, a better sense of the mechanism by which decision is made about renewal at the end of the 30-year period. I understand there were two extensions possible for 25-year periods. And I thought that it said that all the jurisdictions have to agree to that?
Yeah, there, there's two, two agreements. One is the agreement between City of Williamsburg, York County, and James City County. We've set it up as an initial, I believe, 30-year term. That was really around the debt associated with the facility and expecting that to be a 30-year term. So at the end of that, we would have the ability to have two extensions. It would still require all of us to still want to be in it. But I think the, our thinking as your board members were that we would have the opportunity there, that if we didn't want to participate any longer, or perhaps York didn't, we could decide then if it's still financially makes sense, or still a community amenity that is important to us, that we could then extend that lease or agreement between the three localities. So that is the, the two 25-year extensions that were envisioned. I think the process, when we get there, is it still a community asset? Is it financially beneficial? Do we still believe it's worth our time and money being put into that facility at the end of a 30-year agreement?
We have no stake in the building once the, once the 20, the 30-year period is up. Is that right?
We, we don't have a financial requirement going forward, and we don't have a, a ownership of the building regardless of the outcome of that unless the agreements later change. So our financial commitment would initially be for that 30-year period to cover a portion of the operating costs, the reserves, and those kinds of things, to make the building operation, operationally viable.
And then when we talk about the, the potential of, of the range of, of annual cost between 300,000 and 800,000 for each of the two counties. So what happens if the costs are below the 300,000 combined, the 600,000 deficit? Sure. And what happens if it's over the 800,000 per county?
We had this discussion of why a minimum, why a maximum. And on the maximum side, we believe that will be a maximum operating need from, from the two counties, and our intent is to fund reserve accounts. So as you have some of those anomalies going forward in time, we do have operational reserves, we have capital reserves, and we have funding there. So that when something breaks or needs to be repaired that's expensive, we have money in place. And so our financial commitment wouldn't exceed that unless we agreed for it to exceed that. If there was some strange thing that we hadn't forecasted. So I think your maximum exposure is, is pretty well protected. On the underside, we talked about why a minimum of 300,000 at all? Why not? If you didn't need money, you wouldn't take it. And I think there's some feeling that, one, we don't want to set a false expectation that it won't need some amount of funding from us. But there is also the opportunity from the H R T F board, when they have an annual audit, they get through the year, they could return a surplus back to the locality. So there's an opportunity, if this facility does run at a profit, so to speak, for a lot of years, there is the ability for the board to return that money to the localities. And the board is us. It's two members from each jurisdiction representing our best interest in terms of the operation and funding for the facility.
Scott, I was hoping that you could, the, the question was raised at our last meeting regarding Virginia Beach, and that I think, I believe it to be a misnomer that it is not successful. I was wondering if you could address what you've, what you know about that facility?
Sure. Yeah, Ms. Larson, we've, we've had that question really addressed or asked at every briefing we've had with the City of Williamsburg, with our board supervisors, and with the York County Board of Supervisors. I think members of our community still are concerned that, that our facility will be a failure just like Virginia Beach's. And I would tell you, that is incorrect. Virginia Beach's facility is, is very successful in terms of what it said it would do. And Victus advisor was their advising company or financial group back in 2016, 17. They had predicted about 34,000 additional room nights. They actually hit 41,000 in the first year, and they're on track for an additional 60,000 this year. So I think they would tell you the facility is, from a functional standpoint of being utilized, having the impact on hotels and the business and the economic development activity that goes along, is beyond what they forecast five years ago. And so I think from that standpoint, it is very successful. Where our consultant, who was again involved in the selecting of their operator, they, they, Virginia Beach selected an operator who I think overpromised and then couldn't deliver. And two things came out of that. One, the operator was being paid about 650,000 per year. The average fee is about 150 to about 250,000. We have our fee. It is right around the 200,000 mark. So we believe our operator, whichever we select, we will be in the range of what most operators are paid. The other side of that in Virginia Beach, they did not purchase the, what the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, the things that run all the stuff inside the building to make it a sports facility. The operator offered to provide that or for them. And so he bought it, had a loan for it, and then depreciated it. And so what he did is every year, he had a 650,000 loss. So when you hear that they lost, had a 1.3 million dollar loss, it is because they were overpaying their operator, and they were depreciating the equipment that the operator provided. And so that has been two years of operating at that 1.3 million dollar loss. And then as they break that contract or get out of it with their operator, they have then had to buy that equipment that the operator had borrowed money to provide to the facility. And so that is where Victus would tell you, and we have believed there was a mistake made in their operator selection and what they thought they would be able to buy. The actual facility has done extremely well. It was meant to do off-season rentals. I mean, the summertime there, they didn't need hotel stays. It was the May through, or excuse me, the September-through-May timeframe that they were trying to fill it with tournaments. And from that standpoint, it has been extremely successful. I believe Brian Connolly with Victus Advisors is online if you have further questions or if he needs to correct anything. But I would tell you, the Virginia Beach facility is very successful. We are also aware of the Henrico facility that has just come online. And in listening to them, they have almost all their weekends booked. Their first year of operation, we believe, in talking with operators, that will be our experience as well. It will be booked for the first year of operation.
Just, and just maybe the folks at Victus can, can help this. So as I understand it, the, there's a cost involved in, in this breaking of the contract with the, with this current management?
Repeat that one more time for Mr. McGlynn?
Yeah, I understand there's a cost involved for the, for the city of Virginia Beach in terms of the breaking of the contract with the management company that they'd selected.
Yes, it's 6.1 million to terminate that contract. 4.6 million was to buy that furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And 1.5 million for unpaid bills with partners that they're going to need as a sports facility going forward that the operator hadn't paid since February. So yes, the cost of Virginia Beach is 6.1 million to break that contract. A big part of that is the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. We are purchasing that. That is part of our initial commitment, that 800,000 per year. We- is part of our initial commitment, that 800,000 per year. We, James City and York are primarily purchasing that furniture, fixture, and equipment. So we own it versus trying to get it through our operator.
Scott, could you please, I know in the presentation it talked about the city was responsible for capital. Would you please break that down and specifically explain for everyone what that means?
So let me just check in with Brian Connolly. He is online. Mr. Connolly, is there anything that I should have added further to the Virginia Beach experience?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
No, I, I, I can tell Scott that you've listened to, to me and my partners at Victus explain that situation many times, because I think you really, you really nailed it. Like Scott said, there were, there were a couple key decisions that City Council in Virginia Beach made regarding the, the operator selection and the operating agreement that they signed with them. And those, those operating agreement decisions are what drove the reported financial losses. From an economic impact standpoint, it exceeded expectations. The hoteliers there who really brought this, this idea to the table in the first place because of the need for filling in hotel nights outside of the, the summer busy season have been ecstatic. Before Virginia Beach Sports Center opened, the off-season hotel occupancy in Virginia Beach was about 30%. And last year, it was reported at about 45%. So a, a very significant increase in, in hotel nights, and they're now already running a surplus in their tourism fund post, since 2020, and they're looking at how do they invest that in, in the next, the next facility that, that can help drive hotel nights. So they're, they're very happy with the facility in terms of its performance. And we've been working with the city over the last two months to help them get out of that agreement with the SM. And as of December 1st, their, their agreement has been terminated, and they have been bought out. So the, going forward, Virginia Beach will be operating with a new long-term operator under a more traditional operating and management agreement like the one that the HRTFA is, is going to be setting up for their selected operator. So going forward, you'll, you'll start to hear, I would assume within the next six months, about how the financial performance at Virginia Beach has improved and improved significantly since termination of the, the old agreement.
And, and while, while you're on the, on the phone there, can I just ask one other question? And, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, I'm just trying to find out as much as I can about this agreement before we have to make a decision about it.
Sure.
I'm assuming that the, the tracking of the increased rooms is something that takes place through, does it take place through the facility? Are you, are, are your tournaments coming in and identifying where people are staying? Is any of this?
So it can be done, yeah. It can, it can be done either way. So in Virginia Beach, the, the group that's responsible for booking all the events in the facility is actually the sports marketing unit of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So every time an event is brought into the facility that's going to drive hotel nights, they room block nights for those events, and then the event organizers are directed to have their attendees and teams and, and families book their hotel rooms through those established room blocks. So the numbers that Virginia Beach are, is reporting are auditable room block numbers that have been booked through the sports marketing unit.
Thanks.
So they can measure that directly. If you don't have a, a sports marketing unit like Virginia Beach, most of the operators, including the, the operators that we're speaking to regarding the potential to operate the, the Williamsburg facility, have software that they use when they're organizing events and then hosting events that allow the event participants to book their room nights in a similar manner through room blocks established by the operator. So either way, best practices is to use room blocks to be able to establish hotel partners, make sure that the, the, the people coming are staying within your economic area and not leaking to other, other communities, and then be able to measure exactly how many room nights there are each year.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. That, that helps to, to understand better.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Sadler, do you mind repeating your question for me?
Yes, in the presentation, it mentioned the city of Williamsburg would be responsible for capital. I think for everyone to understand, would you just explain that a little more in-depth, please?
You know, from the beginning, when we started talking about this project a few years ago, we had talked about the, the city was offering to pay for the construction and fund the debt service associated with that or support that. The counties were being asked to covering operating deficit in the reserve accounts. And so as, as we have explained a few weeks ago, Mr. Carnifex covered tonight, while the facility cost has gone up, it has not gone up for us in terms of the operating costs. They are at least similar to what we had discussed. They have gone up, and the city's contribution had increased by over a million dollars to cover the debt service associated with those increased costs. So the HRTFA would pay the debt service. We are paying a portion of that through our maintenance of effort, dollars that we are required to fund and send to the authority. So that is covering a portion of that debt, about a million and a half. And then the city's covering the other, about another two and a half million they're contributing towards the debt. So the debt would be paid by those two sources, and then we, York and James City Counties will be covering the operating portion. We would not be on the hook, so to speak, for the debt associated with the facility.
Thank you. And can you please address the need for gym space and how this would serve a dual purpose?
Mr. Carnifex and I have talked about it a lot, and he can come up and fill it in a little more and at least start that conversation, I guess, on the gym space need and how our residents would benefit from having a facility.
Sadler, it goes back to 2008 when we were needing to build that gymnasium, and then the recession hit. You know, we were struggling back then to meet the needs of our local community, both our volleyball, basketball, and, and others. And now pickleball has surfaced since then that will fill up this facility too for some tournaments. So I think a combination, we've added some schools, we've added some gyms, but what we're seeing is, it's very difficult because the school programs, they're having a hard time getting coaches that teach. So the coaches are having to coach in the evenings and after 5 o'clock, when the community used to be able to get into the school gyms frequently and often. That's kind of diminished. And as our population continues to grow, you know, there's, all of our sports programs have increased significantly and, and are projected to do so. So I think gymnasium space is always at a premium. And of course, it's like everything else. Nobody wants to be in there at midnight, and they want to be in there right, you know, from 5 o'clock till 9 o'clock every night. So everybody's trying to get in there at the prime time. So there's no doubt in my mind that the gymnasium space, Monday through Thursday, our local participants will benefit from this significantly. And I think it will have an indirect impact, a positive impact on our athletic programs in the schools, because there's, you know, a struggle now to meet the needs in just the school gymnasium.
Thank you.
Couple, Mr. Carnifex, one, one question for you on the, on the gymnasium, because, you know, I understand that 2008, great recession comes along, we, we decided we didn't have the resources to be able to do that. Recession's been over for a long time. We haven't brought forward this need for a gymnasium. We've known the need has been, been there. We haven't brought forward funding for it.
And I think we, we've added two, and I think we're going to add a third auxiliary gym, you know, at the schools, which has, which has helped.
It has helped.
It has helped some, but it hasn't met the community needs as much as the growth is, continues.
And I, I don't, I don't deny the community need. I guess my question has always been a matter of what the priorities were, because they were always, when we came right down to it, competition and Parks and Recreation and all of our recreation facilities, as much as we really like them and, and fund them to as much, at max extent possible, some of these things we didn't do because there were competing priorities that we felt were higher priority. And so I, that's, I think that's one thing we need to, to keep in, keep in mind. I, I did notice that, that you talked about the debt service on that being a little over a million dollars a year for that community gymnasium. That was a 20-year, as opposed to what we're doing here, which is a 30-year.
Correct. When the, when the county, traditionally, we only go 20 years in our bonds. James City County does.
Okay.
That's why, and I worked with our FMS department to calculate that number. So what I would like to say, I think with this facility and, and your question and comment about, yeah, priorities, absolutely. There's been a lot of priorities, and, you know, gymnasium space doesn't always rise to the top. And, you know, I think James City County has done a good job at meeting all of our priorities in the county. I do think this, this opportunity is, I think, a collaboration and a regional partnership that is a good thing. You don't see that in many localities, and for three local governments to come together to jointly support, to fund and operate a facility together is very uncommon. And I think, you know, that's something that, that this board and, and the others should be proud of if we, if we move in this direction. And I think it's a cost-effective way for all of us to, to meet the needs of our community and, and the gymnasium space. And the advantage over this, over the Warhol is that the tourism impact is going to be significantly greater for a 12 gymnasium complex than, than the three gyms, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd come back to Stevens, and, because we're looking at the actual funding agreement document, and it, it just sort of strikes me as, there's, there's a thing I highlighted. It says that therefore, if determined by the HRTFA board, the county annual payment, which is what the two counties would be covering for operational losses, would be based on actual financial results. And then it says, and it will not then be less than the minimum. And you've basically explained to me that, okay, if we put the 300,000 minimum in, even if they have a really good year and make money, then they will come back and, and look at it and potentially rebate some money back to us. There's nothing in the document that I saw that makes a provision for that. You know, and then the, the question is, you know, is, if that were the case, how, can you explain a little bit to me how we would go about doing this on an annual basis? Because, you know, I have the same basic question that, that Dr. McGlynn had, and that was, you know, we have a 300,000 minimum and 800,000 maximum. And what, it's not spelled out in any of these documents, you know, precisely what happens when something doesn't fall within that group. And, and I, I come back to, this is a document we're being asked to approve on funding. And I've learned one thing is that if you don't have it in writing, you don't have it. And sometimes when the lawyers get involved, if you do have it in writing, you don't have it. And so I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. And I, I'd like to get a little bit better feel for, you know, why we couldn't put something into the document that spells that out.
Ms. Larson, I think we do have a sentence, because I was asking that same question, reading the paragraph of our minimum requirements of being 300 or 800. Under annual audit is where that is. It was paragraph eight. And there is a, a sentence that talks about preceding year, undesignated fund balances or surplus funding that could be distributed back by the board to the participating locality. So again, it doesn't define exactly how we would make that determination. We have an established reserve accounts. We would need to work with our operator, see how the building, our funding is going and buying the equipment. What kind of reserve level should we have in our operating accounts and these capital reserve accounts? But there is a mechanism, at least in writing for me, that would, I could point to representing the county in future years that would say, if we have this surplus and it's such amount that we funded the reserve components we need, then in paragraph eight, it does say those monies could be distributed by the board, back to the, by the HR, HRTFA board, back to the participating localities. And so to your point, it doesn't, it doesn't describe all detail of how we'd get there, but there is a written sentence that says that is an expectation and a possibility for the board to make that back if it were operating at a sufficient surplus. We would know that at the end of an audit, so that comes in the fall of each year. And again, that comes ahead and here of the HRTFA board making a request to the localities, how much that agreement, that amount of funding needs to be from the counties. And it may be that some years, it's a $300,000 minimum that's reflected here, but the surplus is a greater number that's returned to you. That is a possibility in future years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and our first speaker card. Robert Lund. How you doing, sir?
For hipple, board members. I'm Bob Lund, 111 Swinway Forest. I have to apologize that I've been focusing on other things, and I really have not paid much attention to this. So I saw something in the paper that said, "And Tuesday night is your last chance to say something about this before a, or walked into place," essentially. This, to me, comes across as something that does not seem feasible. I've got a lot of concerns and a lot of issues. Talking with others and listening to other people, and I'm not sure how many of the ones I've interacted with are able to be here tonight. I know some of them definitely cannot. Every one of them was concerned, and every one of them will, would say the same thing that I'm going to say is, please don't commit James City County to this till you're sure and you know that it's a good deal for James City County. From what I've heard tonight, from what I've read previously, this does not sound to me like a good deal for James City County. Among other things, I spent over a decade with an attorney bolted to my hip doing deals for my employer, and there's a huge difference between could and would. And the questions I heard board members ask tonight, I think, are spot-on questions that need to be resolved. Before you commit, I think you want firm answers to those, and I think you want to see, you know, where the James City County interests are protected, and that the board has firm obligations to James City County with respect to it. Got to confess, my own bias is for smaller facilities, facilities that would not, in the words of one resident who's mentioned to me, the white elephant in one locality, but facilities that are distributed among the localities that draw people into all of our localities, not just drawing people into one locality. So, and when we talk about spending our taxpayer money, you know, as was mentioned here tonight, we have a lot of other needs. We have needs with our schools. You know, we've got the whole, perhaps still outstanding question of whether our partner in the school district is thinking they want to go their own direction, and we therefore will have an educational system where students can get up to a certain grade, and then whoops, there's no facility for them for a couple of years. And then, you know, and how do we deal with that? And, you know, I've heard trailers at schools, you know, the space issues. So that suggests to me that we've got tax money that we need to be focusing on our schools. You know, there's been some discussion about gym space within the county. And, you know, that this facility would provide the gym space, which means our residents are going elsewhere. They're not spending time in our county. They have to go somewhere outside of our county to do these things. And maybe that's a cost-effective approach. You know, in all honesty, I, I can't say. But then there's the Brickyard Landing Park, which to me seems like a perfect location to create some sort of recreational facility to both bring people into the area, but then also have our residents benefit from it. And I understand, you know, seasonal things, and, you know, there may be a desire to be doing things, more things in the winter inside. And I can't speak well to that, but I, I urge you to think about doing things that would perhaps with this organization be distributed among the localities. And thank you for your patience in listening to me babble tonight. Oh, and have a excellent Christmas and holidays.
Patrick Rowe?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Rowe. I live at 100 Royal St. George's. My wife, Lori, and I have been homeowners in James City County since 2004 and full-time residents since 2009. One of the benefits of living in this county is its long- since 2009. One of the benefits of living in this county is its long term track record of sound financial decision making. Tonight, the board has before it an issue that could put that enviable record in jeopardy, a decision on the proposed regional sports complex. As now presented, there is neither a sound business case for the overall proposed complex, nor a clear picture of its benefits to James City County residents. This seems destined to become another case study of a failed stadium, arena, or sports complex that bleeds taxpayers dry before it finally fails to deliver all of the elusive benefits that are dangled before approving authorities. You must buy this now argument is a classic red flag in any business transaction. This proposal should be sent back to the drawing board, and I would recommend you withhold all approvals until the project proves itself to be viable and stand on its own and advantages to James City County. Thank you for your time and for your attention.
Thank you. Neil Chalkley?
Good evening, board members. My name's Neil Chalkley, 477 Neckeland Road. I served as president of the Hotel Association for the past five years. I'm also the board and board of Visit Williamsburg, and I serve the chamber as a board member. I'm not here tonight to represent any one of them. Later, my director will be speaking on behalf of our association. I was born and raised in James City County. Fifty-one years I've been a resident of this county. I left at age 18, thanks in part to the United States Navy. I returned after 1990 after a successful career with Marriott, opened a restaurant in this town, and we appropriately named it Family and Friends. I'm blessed with my wife Teresa, five beautiful children. They are now out on their own, and they're finally, I should say, they are finally now out on their own. I'm also blessed with two grandchildren and another grand boy on the way, all James City County residents. What I see as a parent here is the beauty and the memories of this county. Okay, I've been here my whole life. I was born. I believe there's no disputing the fact that we're a tourism based economy. We have a world class museum here, Colonial Williamsburg. We have a world class theme park right down the street that serves James City County. How great would it be for our families to be further blessed with a world class sports center in our own backyard? I cannot tell you what means more to me unless it was watching my children participate in a venue like this that we're trying to create. Sports is a growing demand, and anyone who has children is, has, or will experience the demand put on our family to develop and raise our children. My children have all succeeded, but I still think it could have been so much better if we could have participated in an event like this right in our own backyard. I urge you not to wait on something that is so needed. The process to date, I promise you, has been completely transparent. I've been working on this for six years now with the association. Just this morning, Channel 10 quoted us as being transparent, bringing this forward to y'all before we built the place. That's why we're here, and that's what we've done. It's been years to get tonight's vote. I just ask you one thing. I think we need to stop thinking about what we should do and start doing what we can do. Please vote to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Kirkland?
My name's Ron Kirkland, 1001A Richmond Road, Williamsburg. Chairman Hippel, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here representing the Williamsburg Hotel and Motel Association. If you're around, please stand up. Our members thought it would be better if we spoke with one voice and not waste everyone's time having dozens of our people come up here and say the same thing over and over. A particular note, HMP Properties has joined us. They own and operate the Holiday Inn Express on McCall Circle, and Mr. Priest Shaw, who owns and operates the courtyard by Marriott on McCall Circle, and the Country Inn and Suites on Pocahontas Trail. Together, they have invested millions of dollars in James City County, and they share our vision of tourism in the area. I'm going to briefly address three topics: transparency, needs, and then the numbers. Transparency, there have been a few folks in the community that have exclaimed, we need to delay a vote so we can be more transparent. A particular interest seems to be, what are the costs? The idea of an indoor sports complex really started back in 2014, when James City County and the city collaborated on a feasibility study for a field house, or an aquatic center, or both. I and many other people and organizations have participated in studies, workshops, field trips, tours, interviews, working groups, committees, subcommittees, and general discussions for at least 10 years. And about five years ago, the WHMA applied for a tourism development grant in the city of Williamsburg. As part of that process, we publicly laid out our vision of what an indoor sports facility would look like. And while that has changed some over the years, the fundamentals have not. We have always said this type of facility would not make a profit on its own, and would require a subsidy for operations. Back then, we estimated $750,000 annually from James City County and York County. That number remained unchanged, and has been the basis for all operational subsidy discussion, until we finalized the size, scope, cost, and location of the facility earlier this year. And the numbers have now become $300,000 to $800,000. Those who have been involved in the process, I think, are aware of that. It's been shared publicly on numerous occasions. And to get to where we are today, there's been a high level of transparency, including with those that have been elected to specifically represent the public. The needs. James City County has roughly 80,000 citizens that need indoor places to enjoy recreation, while at the same time having a severe lack of indoor places to enjoy. James City County also has a significant tourism industry that is in need of a new demand generator. The indoor sports complex can address those needs and do so much more effectively and affordably by pooling resources with the city of Williamsburg and York County. Some folks have suggested that, you know, James City County build their own independent facility. And if we take a look at that a little more, early estimates for that three court facility are in the 13 to 15 million dollar range, with operational costs of 300 to 350,000 annually. And I think the first and most important thing to know about that is that expense would have to be paid for out of the general fund of James City County, and James City County taxpayers will bear 100% of that cost. The type of bond over 20 years at current rates would cost taxpayers 20 to 25 million, plus 6 to 7 million in the subsidies, 26 to 32 million dollars in total. And that would likely serve your citizens very well, albeit a much smaller and flexible space that would offer little, if any, economic benefit, and all but zero benefit to tourism. The operational subsidy being considered now is 300 to 800,000 dollars. Over the same 20 years, if we use the 800,000, that total cost is 16 million dollars. If you stretch it out to 30, it's 24 million dollars. Either way, it costs more for James City County to build it and operate it on your own than to join with the city in York County. A bigger regional facility benefits local citizens and the local tourism economy, and that's what we call a win-win. Now for the numbers. The tractors have claimed this puts James City County on the hook. Actually, it doesn't really have to at all. And I would suggest that everyone take a look at section E6, page 186 of the adopted budget, which is the Tourism Investment Fund. Tourism Investment Fund is comprised, excuse me, 100% of taxes that are collected by James City County hotels and remitted accordingly. These funds by law are required to be spent supporting tourism, and more specifically, increasing overnight stays. One line item in the tourism fund is for 542,300 dollars. It goes to the HTRFA. It's not a discretionary expense. It must be spent exclusively to support tourism. And so if you take that out, and don't consider that as part of the operational subsidies, we're still left with that 300 to 800,000 dollars. And we're not telling James City County how to spend the money. However, we are pointing out that not one shiny penny of the requested funds have to fall on the shoulders of local taxpayers. Board supervisors can, if you so choose, prioritize those funds and use hotel tax dollars to subsidize 100% of the indoor sports complex, providing an economic benefit to tourism and recreational opportunities for the citizens, thus allowing you to prioritize revenue in the general fund for teachers, cops, firefighters, schools, or whatever's most needed for the county and its people. We hope that each of you will show your support for this partnership, vote yes today. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
You. Thank you very much. John Capell, is that correct? Thank you, sir.
My name is John Craftle, 106 Robert Cole Court. I'm here representing the Performance Venue Group, which is a group of 12 organizations in the performing arts. It may sound unusual to be talking to you about a sports complex when you're a representative of the performing arts, but we are here to support that proposal. I think all of you, as you have traveled around the country, you find that people know about Williamsburg. In my career, I traveled all over the country, and almost everyone knew of Williamsburg. But there is generally one reason to come to Williamsburg, and that's the colonial, because of the colonial area. That's the primary draw. What I see here, and what the Performance Venue Group sees, is the opportunity to build incredible synergies for this city in terms of what we can draw. We have Busch Gardens, we have Colonial Williamsburg, we will have a sports complex. We in the Performance Venue Group also believe that we should have a performance hall in addition to that. But the point is, all of these things are synergistic. They will help each other. And the sports complex, in terms of its size and the way that it's been thought through, in our mind, is something that is magical, because it will have national appeal. It will put us on, you might think that a little town like Williamsburg couldn't draw, but lots of people want to come to Williamsburg. And this gives them a tremendous excuse to come here, for, in addition to just the fact that it's, that it's, you know, a historical area. So what I have to say to you is that we encourage you to support this project, because we do believe that it will more than pay for itself in terms of what it does because of the way it ties into the magic of our community that already exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that correct? I may have messed that up. I apologize if I have.
Close to five road hole, Williamsburg, Virginia. If Virginia Beach, with a population 2.7 times the combined population of James City County, York County, and the city of Williamsburg, is losing millions of dollars on its sports facility, why do we think we'll have different results? Of course, because we'll have a better operator. That's a guarantee, isn't it? Common sense says that splitting the business with Virginia Beach is only going to increase losses for both of them. This is another short sighted attempt at replicating the sale of the James City County reservoir to Newport News, significantly increasing our water costs. In this case, what's going to go up is our taxes. I feel like we're watching an episode of The Masked Singer. We can hear the tune, but we don't know who's doing the singing. I think it's time to unmask the singer. It's the Restaurant Hotel Association and Colonial Williamsburg. This boondoggle will primarily benefit them, and the taxpayers will be left holding the bag. If it's such a good idea, why don't the hotel, restaurant, and Colonial Williamsburg put up the money and fund it themselves? I think that's a question that has to be asked. The answer is simple. They get a free lunch with no downside risk, but we take all the risk. It's easy to propose something when you're using OPM, other people's money, but it's hard to do when it's your own. The fact that there's a rush to move forward with a proposal so it can't be fully studied adds to this suspicion. Thank you, Jim Eisenhour, for trying to stop this freight train. If there's not enough affordable housing now for the current hospitality industry workers, where are these people going to live? In a tent city? This may bring some tourist dollars, but it's a very high upfront capital expenditure and a huge long term debt. Like Irving, Irv Dirks once said, a billion here and a billion there, and pretty soon you're talking real money. This will increase local taxes by $700 for every man, woman, and child living in the area per a million dollars worth of deficit, not counting the taxes needed to support the bond funding for construction. Will this destroy our AAA credit rating? In addition, this makes the local economy even more reliant on tourism than it already is. Do we really want to put all our eggs in one basket and watch the eggs break like it did when COVID hit, or the national economy goes into a recession? Wouldn't it be better planned to diversify our economy so it isn't reliant on one revenue stream? Every financial planner will tell you to diversify. Don't make everything dependent upon one factor. In addition, a better idea would be to work with William &amp; Mary to develop an IT center with good paying jobs, or medical research center, or any other type of non hospitality investment in industry that brings in fewer but better paid workers that don't put as much strain on our housing, police, fire, and other resources, and increase and not increase our tax burden. Will the people of James City County, York County, and Williamsburg be given the power to vote on this issue, or will it be taxation without representation? Thank you.
Thank you. Pleased that we can keep the clapping down while the meeting's going on. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Charles Mysik?
Evening. Charles Mysik, 3061 Old Grove Lane, Duwanau. I really appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak to supervisors on this topic. I am for nor against it. I just want you to look at it with open eyes. If this was such a great deal, I wouldn't be standing here. There would be a private equity investor wanting to do it to make money, just like the one that's going into the old Yankee Candle Building. It seems that all these facilities have to rely on government subsidies. You're looking at $80 million plus to build it, 25 million for bonding, not even counting the deficits. the deficits. You're going to be well over $100 million. And at the end of 20, 30 years, you're going to walk away from it because William &amp; Mary owns it? Why is it there? Put it on public property where we can own it. It doesn't make sense. If it's a viable situation, you don't have to rush it through in two weeks or four weeks. Everything should be spelled out in writing with nothing being hidden. That way, no one could question your good authority, intelligence, and due diligence. I think, as the previous speaker said, that maybe we are depending too much on the tourism. The James Cities, Counties, businesses run the hotel industry, the restaurant industry. As he mentioned, COVID. What if another two years of COVID come? This facility is going to be sitting empty with our taxes paying for it. Really have to do a lot more due diligence before you make a decision. If it was that good, there would be private people running it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mac Mestayer?
Mac Medier, 105 Gilly Drive. Thanks, everybody. I have a few points to make, but the main one is that I'm speaking just as a taxpayer. I don't have any interest in this. I'll go into a little more detail, but I don't have any interest in this other than what my money pays for. So, I mean, first of all, as far as paying taxes, I'm certainly happy to pay for taxes where I get a direct benefit. And I use a lot of the services around here, the library, the rec center, the parks, the roads, police service, fire service. But I'm also happy, very happy, to pay for services that are indirect, for instance, the schools. It's in the benefit of all of us to have well-educated students and good teachers. And as far as that goes, I think sports are a big part of schools. So it's great to have, you know, the schools have sporting centers, sporting stadiums and so forth. That's great. So I'm happy to pay for that. And I'm glad that we mentioned Virginia Beach because we're definitely not Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach is big, Virginia Beach is crowded, and in fact, if all, well, okay, so the other thing is that when we all heard about this, I first heard about this a few months ago. I knew there was going to be some sports center. I thought it was going to be like Warhol, frankly. And then I read something a week or so ago that basically said that it's more of a destination sporting venue than a venue for our own local teams and so forth. Although I have heard that there would be some time for local people, but it seems like the main thrust of this whole thing is that it bring in tourists from out of state. So my third point is that I don't want to live in an overdeveloped area. I believe that, the same as many citizens have said over the years that our long-term planning, people say they want to keep the rural character and so forth. So I really don't want my tax dollars to be bringing more people in to the restaurants where I like to go eat, more people in onto the roads where I like to drive. And this may happen, but I don't want to subsidize it with my own tax dollars. So what I would ask, and I think many people have, is take some time on this and either vote it down or at least scale it down. And that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline Pyrex?
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to sort of give you my two cents worth. As the gentleman before, I'm here representing no one but myself. My husband and I make our home here. We're taxpayers in James City County. My first point is please don't rush this decision. There's a lot at stake here. And I liked the gentleman who said, you know, "You've got to buy it right now." I remember trying to use that on my mother to get her first car. Didn't go over very well. There's also a reason for the cliche haste makes waste, because it does. And if you hurry into this, the likelihood is that we will not have the outcome that you would hope for. And as you deliberate, I would like you to consider a few things that have come to my mind as I thought about it. First, this facility really isn't for me. It's not for my family. It's not for the residents of James City County. Maybe we would be able to use it occasionally, but it's really not for us. It will operate at a deficit. Pretty much everybody says that. The costs are fixed. The revenue is, well, it's an estimate. It's a guess, maybe a good one. Maybe not. We don't know. Building this complex will tie up funds for a lot of years, decades. What else might we need those funds for? We don't know. But let's not forget also the opportunity cost. What opportunities may come our way that we could respond to if we had a little bit of financial flexibility? We don't know that either. The field is crowded. There are a lot of these kind of complexes out there. Just a little bit of Googling told me that there's a pretty new complex in Henrico County, the eastern side of Henrico County even, just down the road. Just last month, the Prince William County voted to fund a gigantic sports complex in Prince William County. There's already one in Fairfax, and we've all been talking about the one in Virginia Beach. I'm glad to know tonight that it's not in as much trouble as Virginia Pilot apparently thought it was. But still, they've asked the city for more money, and they've had to spend a little bit more than they thought for whatever reason. And there's the point about the land being leased, and at the end of the period, what do we have? Really, at the end of a 30-year period of a lease, the building is in ours, the property is in ours. What exactly is? And as has been mentioned before tonight, the idea behind the complex seems to be to support the tourism sector in Williamsburg. And I don't deny how very much important that is, restaurants and the hotels. But you will actually essentially be asking your taxpayers to support the tourist industry. Unfortunately, tourist-related jobs tend to be low-paid and without benefits. What we need in JC City County, in my humble opinion, much more than we need a sports complex, is a more diverse economy. And maybe we could consider spending some of those funds to look at ways that we could bring in companies and businesses that will add to the company's tax base and will provide good-paying jobs. That's the way forward. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Pyrex, 101 Doral. Forgot to identify myself. I'm sorry.
Thank you much.
My name is Ken Joss. I live at 108 Dyke here in Williamsburg. Before moving here seven years ago, I spent 43 years in New York City associated with the public finance industry. Okay? For those that, public finance builds sports complexes and other facilities, of course. Sports complexes, in my experience, have been notorious money losers. That being said, we're talking about investing $80 million here to build a complex. If this is such a great deal, I suggest that we lay it all out to the public and submit it to a referendum. Since the taxpayers are on the hook for this, I think that the taxpayers should get a say in whether or not the plans actually go through. That's all I got. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for listening to my five minutes of fame. I want to thank the lady that spoke before me. I think she stole what I wanted to say. I'm a new resident of James City County. I've not been here for 50 years, as many others. I've only been here for two years. And my husband and I love it here. You all should be congratulated in how you run your county. It's just a wonderful place and attracts a lot of retirees that I see behind me. I've spent most of my life as an ICU doctor until I came here, and so I'm not really good at the civics or finance stuff. It's not my thing. But I know about things that you know and things that you don't. You know, people come with me with an ailment. I can tell you what I know about it. But I can also say what I don't know about it. And I think with this project, which I finally, now I'm getting involved in civics when I don't have to worry about people with COVID or on ventilators, I can pay attention to other things. One thing I know is that this will cost money. This is going to cost the taxpayers money. This is going to create a debt. There's a cost. And I don't think anyone is arguing about that. And like many costs, a lot of things that you have in this county cost you something. The Marine is going to cost you something. All these things cost you something, and it's going to have to be, is it worth it to you? And then you have the benefit. Well, what is the benefit going to be? And I have to say that when you have a sports complex here, Virginia Beach, Henrico, Prince William, you know, it's a diluted pool. And you think, well, it may be an endless pool. You're also relying on these teams. Now, this is where I only have a personal experience, but my, one of my nieces is on a field hockey team, private team in Maine. This is extremely expensive for families. Not only is it expensive to belong to a field hockey team in your high school, but these traveling teams are enormously expensive. You live in Maine. Her last tournament that I went to was in Virginia Beach. That's a long way. That's very expensive. They do it because they want their children to be seen by D1 and D2 college coaches. And that's why they do it. But it is expensive. They want a good place to stay and a place that teenagers will eat. That's not the Fat Canary. That's Chick-fil-A. You know, you're not going to get a lot of money from them, and you probably aren't going to get spill over to Colonial Williamsburg, and you probably aren't going to be getting spill over to Water Country or Busch Gardens because they play two games a day on these two- and three-day meets. And then it's during the school year. They aren't going to stay and spend even more money to visit worthy attractions. So I don't know what the benefit will be. Even under your best-case scenario, it's not going to make a lot of money, and it may be more debt than you realize. Then you have to go to your taxpayers and say, well, you know, is it worth it? And it may be. I can't say. Is it worth it to your taxpayers? A lot of whom are retirees. I'd like to see you on the climbing wall. I'm ready for you retirees on the climbing wall. I bet you would have insurance for this place. But, you know, you have to say whether it's worth it, and it may be. But you could have a lot of downside to this. And I think in your heart, you have to say, how are you going to feel in five years, 10 years, 15 years, when there's a lot of downside and you have to go to the taxpayers? This 7% sales tax, which I can't get out of my head, when did that extra amount of money goes away? I mean, I know Ronald Reagan, to paraphrase him, said that there's nothing like eternal life than a tax bill, and maybe this is like eternal life, the 7% tax that will never go away. But if you're baking that in, that may go away. I don't, I don't know. So I think you have to consider all of these things. And the last thing I'm going to be saying, and probably be glad I'm stopping talking, I'm probably the last one to say anything, is that I hope with any of you or anyone involved with this that there's not a conflict of interest. Now, I'm not saying a financial conflict of interest, but that's not what I'm saying. But it's more of an emotional conflict of interest in a project that started in 2014. You know, you get so emotionally invested in it that you can't see clearly. You can't see, what would I think if I was just looking at it today? You know, am I too emotionally invested in this that I wanted to go forward? It's a shiny thing. It has pretty pictures, and I really want to have it happen. It's, there's no mal-intent in that, but you can get overly focused on what you want, and you can't step back. So I'm, oops.
That's okay.
I have the button. Okay, well, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Caroline Kiringen? Did I get that right? Did I mess it up? There's been some tough names this night. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting me speak. It's nice to see you. I'm here speaking in support of the sports complex. I am the president and CEO of the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra. I also serve on the Greater Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce, been quite involved in the community. And I just want to say that I really trust in you. As a James City County resident, I trust that you are going to make the best decision for us. I've heard a lot of information from Victus and a lot of the reports that I've read. I personally feel like this is a wonderful step forward for our community, and I hope that you make the decision to move forward with it. I don't think we have to wait. My children are grown, but I look forward to going to this complex and cheering on these kids and just welcoming new people to our community. So thank you very much for everything you do for us.
Thank you. Morgan Cordley?
Cordle.
Cordle? Sorry about that.
Hi, Morgan Cordle, 101 Branches Pond Road, Duwanow, Virginia. First of all, thank you for your service to the county. It's greatly appreciated, and I know there's a lot of hours and dedication on your end. I'm the head coach and CEO of 757 Swim, a year-round swim team who owns and operates an aquatic center in our county. Since purchasing the pool, we have generated more than 3,000 hotel room nights totaling close to $1 million in economic impact across four weekends a year in a facility that was not designed to host events. It's important to note that we are an unsubsidized nonprofit. Two weeks ago, we hosted an event with over 700 swimmers. We had to rent out restrooms. We had to contract a towing company to use its rotator truck. I don't know if anyone has ever watched Ice Road Truckers, but that is what this truck was used for with many other towing vehicles, to move bleachers into our facility. We also had to rent heated tents, all of this to host an event in which our facility was not designed to do. These teams traveled from outside of Williamsburg to participate in our meet. You see, competitions are the lifeline of competitive sports. Not only do they provide opportunities for athletes to showcase their skills, they provide travel experiences that athletes, parents, and coaches are looking for. When athletes graduate, they talk about their travel experiences. They talk about this camaraderie that they had and everything that they experienced through their competitions. Additionally, in a time where everyone is looking at that gas pump and our bill at the grocery store, families are refusing to cut sports. Sports tourism is recession-proof. Recently, we released details for a spring travel trip, expensive in nature, that filled overnight. Families are finding a way because they believe in the value of sports. The investment into sports tourism will positively impact our county. Again, I want to stress the importance of athletics and how parents invest into sports, not just because of the sport itself, but because of the lifelong skills it teaches. At 757 Swim, we have a saying that we operate by. Fast swimmers, better people. Invest into sports tourism, and you're investing into a brighter future for our community. Thank you.
Nikki Shawon?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity to be able to share my own personal perspective and the Williamsburg Area Restaurant Association's collective leadership perspective. I'm Mickey Chauhan. I live at 129 Berkeley Lane in the city of Williamsburg. I have the great fortune and honor to live in the house I was born in. I am co-owner of Second Street Bistro, and I've been at that location since 1985. This March 2024, we will have owned Second Street for 39 years. I also have the privilege of operating the food service operation at Jamestown Settlement and do pay meal taxes in Jame City County. My brother is building a home in Jame City County. To say we are lifelong residents is shy of an understatement. Personally, I've seen countless changes in our community throughout my life. I participated for years to ensure the region grows carefully, planned, with measured risk, and endorse credible projects that enhance our community and the surrounding region. The Historic Triangle Regional Facility Authority is just that project that will sustain and add to our region's desirability to host out-of-town visitors. Excuse me. Williamsburg has become a year-round destination. The recreation facility will accommodate indoor-outdoor activities that will service those needs. The collaboration to see this complex come to fruition has been talked about for decades. I've been in those conversations. As you may well know, I served on city council. I don't envy your position or what you have to do today to make these decisions, but I do realize that this information that seems to be a little bit thought to be mysteriously hidden has been a conversation that's been going on for years, this recreation facility, because I've been in those conversations and I've seen the information passed around. It takes leadership and courage to make decisions and to commit to reach for greatness. Back in 2007, my brother John and I ambitiously reinvented Second Street Restaurant Tavern to what we have today, Second Street Bistro. It was a very imperfect time in the economy 2007, 2008, to make changes for the future. Thank goodness we did. It was a perfect time in hindsight. We knew if we did not reinvest ourselves, then why should our customer base do so? Yes, we have changed since 1985. We have evolved and continue to invest in our property to remain relevant, popular, and desirable. Regarding the Williamsburg Area Restaurant Association, referred to as WERA, established in 1999, I'll read to you our mission statement that kind of sums it up why I'm here today. Our organization has over 100 members. Our mission: To promote and protect the economic interests of the Williamsburg Area Restaurant industry by maintaining a favorable business environment, thus delivering tangible value and benefits to our members. The leadership team has asked me to convey to the Board of Supervisors that we believe it is in the best interest of the Williamsburg Area Restaurants as a major stakeholder, pun intended. We request Jame City County Board of Supervisors to support the regional project that will benefit locals and support all local businesses with increased out-of-town visitation. As a side note, meal taxes that were collected in the city of Williamsburg, $8.6 million. Jame City County, $8.6 million. York County, $4.2 million. That's a total aggregate of $21.5 million of meal taxes that restaurants generate, and the thought being that if this facility comes online, there will be additional taxes generated to be able to fund this project. I think one thing that gets confused in the mass of the information is Jame City County's commitment is for $300,000 to $800,000 a year. It's not the $80 million. That is covered by the city of Williamsburg, so that the net cost is significantly reduced based on the upside swing of the benefit of the taxes collected. I'm only addressing the restaurant association. The motel association has an equally impressive number as far as taxation is concerned. To end, restaurateurs work and live in Jame City County, York County, and the city of Williamsburg. We are concerned citizens, business owners. We would request the board authorize the county administrator to execute the funding agreement. I thank you for your time, service, and consideration. Merry Christmas. Good time for the buzzer.
Thank you.
It's Dean, but my grandmother used to call me Christina. I'm Christine Payne. I live at 2689 Jockey's Neck Trail. I'm a county resident. I'm not here to support or oppose tonight's decision because I don't know enough to make an informed decision. And quite honestly, after hearing the discussion tonight, I don't think this board does either. What we do know is that the county is already obligated to pay $550,000 a year in perpetuity as a result of the Senator Tommy, I was going to say the Tommy tax, but he was here, so out of deference to him, I will say Senator Norman's legislative amendment. And now what I'm hearing tonight is that county taxpayers will be on the hook for between $400,000 and $800,000 for the next five years, and then between $300,000 and $800,000 for the next 30 years. And quite honestly, looking around this room, that's more time than some of us have left here. So I mean, that's a little mind-boggling to me because the authority's report actually raises more questions than it answers. It looks like the facility will run a deficit, which obviously worries me. And I've read a lot of the reports about Virginia Beach, and I would take issue with some of your interpretations. I've been a swim mom forever, and I know that sports doesn't always make a lot of money. So we are in competition with a number of other area sports complexes. Whether that makes us unique or not, I'm not quite sure, but the county residents really do require from our own board a more refined revenue streams breakdown, and that breakdown we'd like to see by locality, not just, you know, an overall, here are the revenues that we think are going to happen for us. Certainly, the city stands to benefit as well as hotel and restaurant owners, but what is the benefit to the average county taxpayer? That's what I think some of us want to know. The sports complex will undoubtedly feed tourism, but as we've already heard tonight, we've been trying to talk about diversification of our revenues base for years, and this isn't diversifying our revenue base at all. We need a substantive discussion, the county residents do, about projected opportunity costs, because what we want to know is what will we be missing out on in terms of other benefits to the county specifically if we dedicate our tax dollars to this regional facility? We already know that if Williamsburg-Jame City County schools splits, we're going to be on the hook for building at least one more school. We've got a wait list for our Head Start children and our Bright Beginnings kids. We're still working on a facility to educate them. Our teachers are still waiting for the raises that they were promised. Some of them can't even afford housing in the county because it's so expensive. We have to work on affordable housing for our firefighters and our first responders. The list goes on and on about opportunity costs. So I think that what I'm saying tonight is we do need more information, and I think we need more input from county residents in regards to this decision. And quite honestly, this is a lame duck session that we're operating under tonight. The Board of Supervisors, we have two duly-elected board members who really should have the opportunity to vote on something as substantial as this. So at the very least, I'm requesting that the board table this vote until the new county board is seated and so we have more locally-county-specific revenues information to share with the residents, and then we can come back to the table and have a more substantive discussion before a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jorgen Berg, 3108 Hollow Oak Drive in Toano. Didn't plan on speaking tonight. Sent an email to Ms. Adler this morning, kind of voicing, you know, my support for the facility. I know she shared that with you, so you guys probably already know when I'm here, but listening to some of the other comments tonight, I think one thing that, you know, and they're all valid points both sides, one thing that's kind of, I feel, being overlooked is the utility it'll bring to the residents of the county. I'm father of young kids who play sports in the county, and I mean, anyone who's been to the War Hill Sports Complex on a Saturday knows there's not enough athletic space, let alone indoor athletic space. And I know there are other avenues you could do that, but this just seems like a good opportunity. Let's see, I understand the space being primarily geared towards attracting large tournaments, but those are large tournaments that local families and local grandparents can easily attend. You know, not such a stress or strain for travel to some of these larger tournaments in other areas. Not acutely aware of the demographic trends in Williamsburg, Jame City County, but I do know there are more and more young families moving into the county, raising families, families with kids who play sports, you know, kids who may be looking for a team to be a part of. I know travel teams, like some of the ones described earlier, may be prohibitively expensive for residents of the county, but I feel like, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of what's being proposed in terms of programming, but I feel like this space could have lots of opportunities for kids, you know, who may not even be into sports yet. I know I pick my kids up from Stone House every day, and there's buses that take kids from there to Whisk for an after-school program, and, you know, but could mean the difference in someone falling in love with a sport and changing their life, you know, whether that's through friendships or through, you know, finding a natural talent that, you know, could mean all the difference. So it's really all I have to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, that's our last speaker card, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment session. And I looked for the board for discussions, and we have two motions that we're going to have to address tonight, as you see, motion one and motion two. So look for the board for any discussion on the items.
Do we have three motions? If you have a funding agreement, then you have a memorandum of understanding for sharing capital and operating costs between the two counties, and then there's a resolution, isn't there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, motion two is both of those, and motion one is the other. So that puts all three of them in there under two motions. We can divide the other up if you want to divide, make it three, or we put the two together. All right, any discussion, any motions?
I'll start out, if you don't mind. And I do appreciate everyone coming out and giving us your two cents' worth. I know that when we had this presentation two weeks ago, I left the meeting with more questions than answers. I've gotten some of the answers, but still got a lot more questions. And so I'm, my biggest concern right now is why is there what I consider to be, just me, a rush to make this decision? What do we lose by taking a few more weeks to fully vet the proposal? If somebody could give me a really good answer as to, we have to do this. We have to do this tonight. It absolutely must be done. If we don't do it tonight, it's going to cost us X, Y, and Z. I haven't heard any good reason for it, other than we want to get it done. There's a sense of urgency. There's a sense of urgency that this thing needs to be done, and it needs to be done right away. And I am always reminded of a lesson I learned in the Air Force years and years ago, and that is if you want something badly, that's usually how you get it. Need to take the time, in my opinion, to basically have a closer look at it and have our citizens have an opportunity to make a more of an input, and then we can decide if we want to do it, we can do it, you know? I mean, ultimately, this board will decide, and whatever the board decides, we're going to press on with. But I just think that the urgency is something that sort of bothers me. And with that in mind, I don't want to shortstop any further discussion, but I would make a motion that we basically table this until the first meeting of January, and I'd be glad to discuss that with, I think we ought to hear from everybody on the board whether they think that's appropriate or not, and decide that before we decide whether we want to really go ahead and do this tonight.
An emotion?
It's a motion.
Any discussion on the... I'll say something. We've always worked real good together, this entire board, and we've had two years on this. And well, a year ago, we met one-on-one, and Ruth led that with the county administrator, do we want to keep moving forward? And it was unanimous, yes, one-on-one, that, yes, we're going to move forward on this. And we're moving forward on this. And now, all of a sudden, we get a point where, I'm going to say it as gentle as possible, that we've gotten to this point, we haven't been rushed. I've felt no rush at all through this whole process, but now, all of a sudden, we put a letter out that says, we're in rush, we don't have all the information, and fire up our citizens. And you told me Friday you were going to put a letter out, and every member on this board has a right to put whatever they want out. There's no, you can't do this, I can't do that. It's all free for everybody to put out whatever. So I respect you for wanting to put a letter out and get that across, but I think it led into, and it reminded me tonight when I was coming to the meeting, that type of stuff went on before I was on this board, and it caused a lot of fighting and hate and discontent. And that's the reason I ran for this seat on this board, to go, you know what? We all have opinions. We all can put what we want, but we all work as a team. I felt that the letter that went out was a blindside to this board, and I felt it was a political movement, and that's just my opinion, not any of the board members' opinion, but just my opinion. And I thought it was more of derailing this than anything else, and we don't do the politics that they do above us. We meet the citizens on the street, we talk to them, and we meet them one-on-one and discuss things, and we've always had a good relationship, and I want to keep that with all these board members and make sure that we work as a unified team to move things I know Scott has given us any information we've ever asked for and supplied anything that any of us have asked for, but it felt like it was a last minute, I'm going to ask... I'm glad you asked for certain things you wanted, but then when you presented it out in your letter, it was like you have not received, and basically, the letter would have to go in early enough, and all the information that you're asking for may have not got to you by the time the letter got out, but may have got to you after the letter got out. So that left me with a pause in that. Also, we need to look at, we always got to, with business, with county, with anything, you've always got to have new products coming out. Mickey Chauhan was a great example of, you know, his family and what they did. Mickey Showon was a great example of, you know, his family and what they did with their restaurant at Second Street and, and remade it. Saw was, you know, starting to be not what it needed to be and he redesigned it, he and his brother redesigned it, remade it. And, and I think that's what we always need to do in the county. Now, we always need to watch our numbers and that sort of thing. But we're talking about tourism dollars that need to be spent in tourism items. We spent some of our tourism dollars in one-type items that we agreed that we would do on this board. As far as an extra tax and carrying the $80 million, we're not carrying $80 million. Yeah, Williamsburg carrying that, we're not carrying that. So what we're carrying, we can support off our taxes that we're getting off the people that are coming in and out of our community. We can reappropriate that, put that over there and spend it. We don't have to go to another, um, worry of, are we raising taxes? So, and what we're gonna gain from it in the long run, I think is gonna be a plus for our community. I was part of the 2014, somebody spoke, well, was it something that maybe somebody gathered in 2014 and got? We let it go because we're like, we don't know if we wanna do that by ourselves in James City County. So we let that report go on, on the center and also the swim thing. And, um, and now we're doing a joint thing together so that we don't have the burden. Williamsburg has the biggest burden. And everybody's talking about, well, what happens to it in 30 years? Well, we've got the renewable where we can go up to, I think, 90 years?
It's, um,
Once
30 plus two 25-year renewals on that, on the agreement. And on the lease with CW, it's 40 years plus two 10-year renewals.
Okay. So by that time, the facility's gonna need to be overhauled by the time we run that out. And we'll have to look at, is it viable? Is it viable? Will it stay? I mean, you're looking at 50, 60-year structure that then is gonna need more work and everything else. But, um, you know, I honor your motion and you've made a motion on the floor and I wanna give the other members a chance to, and we'll address that motion first. And if, if that motion passes, then we won't need the others. But if it doesn't, then we'll move into if somebody wants to bring any other motions. And I wanna open it up to any of the-
So what was the motion again, please? To, to defer until January?
Yeah.
Can we vote on that?
Postpone it till January. Correct?
That's correct, yeah, okay.
Make sure. Any other comments?
Call the motion.
I, I, I would, I would like to, I would like to respond, if you don't mind, uh, a little bit because it, 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 I, I really, Michael, I respect you. We work together quite well. Let me tell you, first of all, we've been working on this for a long time. When we first started this, my vote for this was so that we could get the information in order to be able to make a decision. Joining this whole process was not a commitment to, to proceed. It has become a commitment to proceed. And that's what has bothered me a little bit. What I was expecting when we got this proposal back was that it would be something that the board would sit back and take a very close look at and make some decisions. I, I didn't, I didn't, uh, if I, be quite honest with you, had, had, I know, and this was the way it was gonna transpire, I wouldn't have, uh, voted to join, join this facility, uh, organization to begin with. I, I really had some, some serious reservations. But I felt that it was in the interest of our citizens to take an honest look at it. And that's what I think we were trying to do. And I, I will tell you that I, I, I'm, I'm sorry that you feel like that it was a political act or, or, or a blindside. But I think that there are a tremendous number of our citizens who really know very little about this, regardless of the fact this has been going on for two years. I, I know less about it than, than probably most of the rest of you because when we had this meeting two weeks ago, I left with more questions than I had answers, as I said. The difficulty I have with it is that we had an opportunity, uh, for answering these, you know, these, I, I brought up all, all the questions. There's nothing in my letter that I wrote that wasn't discussed at this board meeting two weeks ago. There's absolutely nothing that should be a total surprise to you guys. If you feel blindsided, then you probably weren't listening to me very carefully at the last meeting. That's the only thing I can think of. So it is not an intent to, um, basically politicize the whole thing. I think it's an opportunity for us to let our citizens have a better comfort level and understanding of what's going, going, uh, going to happen. If that's not what we wanna do, then that's not what we wanna do. And, and you know, if that's what, if the board doesn't wanna defer it, we won't defer it. If the board wants to vote on it tonight, we'll, we'll vote on it. Um, you know, and unfortunately, I, I, uh, I, I, I don't think that's, uh, serving their best interests, but that's just my personal opinion. Uh, that may, I may well be in the minority on that, I probably, probably am. So that, I apologize if you feel, if you feel offended by my letter. But it was not, it was, my letter was more to make sure that the people that I have to deal with as constituents out there know exactly what it was that I was concerned about. Because I don't think they had an understanding of it prior to that.
Yes, Mr. Hippel, if I may, um, to address the letter, um, this is my last meeting. I haven't endured this part of a relation, working relationship since I've been on this board. I know it went on years ago. And I think we have strived very hard to operate in a very professional manner. To send a letter out on a Friday afternoon with us not having a chance to respond to the fact that you were even gonna do so, you would have had to have sent it in already by the time it went out. We had no chance to respond. If you were gonna alert the public to all of this, you should have done it right after our meeting two weeks ago. I find it a little disheartening right here, when I'm getting ready to walk out, I'll just take it a little bit personal, that this kind of thing was done. We have talked about this at, at length for years. And I'm sorry, but we can't knock on everybody's door and say, excuse me, we're gonna be voting on this. It's up to the public to stay engaged and stay alert. We, we go through a lot of business and it's up to the public to make sure, and I hope people will, stay informed about what we're doing. I don't think we're rushing this at all. We've had tons of questions and tons of answers. And the fact that people still think that we're spending $80 million to fund it tells me that people, please, please listen to what's being said, please, please. Because we're not spending the $80 million, we're not doing it. And the lodging tax money, what people think that we can take all of this tax revenue from lodging and spend it on fire stations and everything else, we can't do that. By law, we have to spend it on tourism-related items. That's the law. We can't just take those funds and put them out wherever. We get a half a percent off of the Tommy tax and we put it into our CIP for those items. But we cannot take that tourism revenue and use it for those things. I think some of the information perhaps that you put out was a little misleading. I had to read the letter three times to even figure some of it out myself. So just on a personal level, I was a little disheartened as I'm exiting. Only one new board member's coming in. These four will be here. And I guarantee you, Ms. Knoll is up to speed with everything that's going on. But we've been in these talks for years, for years. So I personally had a little bit of an issue with you sending that out on, at the 11th hour the other day without, and then everything went helter-skelter because of it. Because all of a sudden, it's this new thing, it's not new, it's not new. So with that, um, I'm sorry you feel rushed, but I don't. And I, and I hope that the next board doesn't operate in that way because that's the way the board operated, to your point, years ago. And we made it a point not to operate that way. And here we are. So I don't feel rushed.
So, um, yeah, not a great way to end the year.
No, it's not.
But, uh, I, I do think that it's a fair question to ask if there are other things that we need to know before a decision can be made. Uh, personally, I think I'd like to know more. But that's, you know, a distinction that I might have with other people. Uh, we've heard a lot of, of, uh, different points of view. I mean, we know that, uh, the maintenance of effort money has to be spent on tourism. But there's a choice that we're making, that this is the tourism we're gonna spend it on. So that's, that's a fair question to, to ask about. Uh, we know that there are other, um, requests that will come forward, um, either now or at later times. We know that there's gonna be a request for Performing Arts Center. We know there's gonna be a, a request for Swim Center. We know that there can be requests for lots of other things as, as well. But, you know, to me, I think the, the question that, uh, that I was, I'm, I'm really trying to, to struggle with is, is the question of, is this the right priority and does it deliver what we want? And that's part of why I've been asking some questions about specific information based on what we've heard tonight. You know, I heard tonight from Victus that, uh, they did have an accounting of, of the room nights. Because it's easy to say, we have more room nights than we had a couple of years ago because a couple of years ago, we didn't sell many rooms. But when you can say that it's because of a particular facility, that does make something of a difference. There are questions about, you know, I, um, you know, there, there's a disconnect between the, the time that Colonial Williamsburg, um, has extended their lease versus what the contract allows for the facility to, to be maintained. This is first I'd, I'd heard that. Maybe I missed it in the, in the contract discussions here. But, you know, to me, it would be helpful to have additional time to hear some more of those questions and get them answered. Uh, I felt like I was kind of, in a sense, being overwhelmed this week with information that was coming in in response to questions, including from me. But, uh, you know, it does take a little bit of, of time and thought to, to consider some of these questions and come up with a reasonable solution. I don't know yet whether I think this is the best way to spend this money. And I honestly would say that I am sort of looking at it with just a question of, have we explored all the implications of this particular decision? Because this is a choice we're making. And I'm not, uh, comfortable with making the choice at this moment, but that's, that's my perspective.
Um, so I, I just, I've, I've shared my, um, complete disappointment about, I don't believe that you govern by, um, calling your colleagues out in a newspaper at three and not for an opportunity at 3:30 for me to respond. I have been, I, I don't, I have remarks that I would like to make, but I will wait and make those towards the end of the evening. I have been working on this. For the record, I have no conflict of interest. I am a, do work with hotels. I have no hotels in this area. The closest hotel is Hopewell. I believe my integrity was questioned today, so I wanna make that very clear. But, um, and I will address my, um, my experience with the tourism industry. But, um, I was not, to, to be given at 3:30 in the afternoon on a Friday, I, I could not respond to that. So, um, and I am disappointed by that. So, and, and we have been working on this. We have community partners that have been working on this for two years. I also, you know, I understand you don't feel that, that all of your questions are answered. I'm not sure that, quite frankly, if I thought January was gonna make a big difference, then I would, you know, I would take that into consideration. I frankly don't. And, um, so I, you know, and I have to agree with Ms. Sadler. It's, it's, there, some, some of the speakers that got up this evening, I, I'm like, is, are, did anyone listen to what was said? Because I don't think that there was, that there was a listening ear on, be, um, on many of the questions because I think they've been answered. And, um, and we've talked about this here, we've talked about this in other meetings. We've, it's been in the newspaper, the city of Williamsburg has discussed it, the county of York has discussed it. This has been a widely discussed topic. I'm sorry if somebody has missed it, I truly am. I'm not sure quite how, but I do believe that it has been covered. So I, I, I will speak more, but to the motion that is on the floor, I just wanted to say that.
All right. And we have a motion on the floor to postpone this and, and, and all of the, um, you, you mean, every, everything, uh, related is the, the two motions?
Two motions, yeah.
Go ahead and post, Jim wants to postpone those.
First meeting in January.
Till January, the meeting in January. So that's the motion on the floor. A yes will be to postpone it, a no will be not to postpone. Roll call, please, sir. Mr. Eisenhour?
Yes.
Ms. Sadler?
No.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
No.
Mr. Hippel?
No.
Motion fails. Okay. Now, we have other motions to address. Readoption of the resolution creating a HTRFA. And, um, that would be the first motion.
I'll move the motion.
Roll call, please. Ms. Sadler?
Hi. Can I just, um, just wanna say that, uh, this does not reflect my opinion of whether or not this is a good project to go forward. It's my, uh, opinion that I'm not ready to, to make a commitment to it.
And we, we are in fact just, uh, addressing just the readoption of the original, uh, Yes.
That's the first step, that's the first step.
That created, yes. That's the first motion.
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
No.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
No.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries, all right. The second motion too is approval of the resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the funding agreement.
So moved?
So, ma'am.
Any question?
I just wanna make some comments if I could. Um, I also wanna say that I'm a little taken aback this evening by the pushback on the tourism industry. An industry that has supported this community for, since its inception, really, since the Rockefeller days. That is what has brought people here. I imagine that most people that have moved here have done so after they have visited this area. And so to push back against an industry that has done what it has done is really, has quite frankly, taken me aback. I don't take the use of taxpayer funds lightly at all. Um, I think I am a fiscal conservative in many ways. But I have lived and breathed tourism my whole life. I was born here. I grew up knowing the value of the visitor to this area. My grandmother was one of the first vice presidents of the bank on Duke of Gloucester Street. I, I always learned about tourism and what it meant to this area. Since I joined this board, I have championed ship, I've been a champion of tourism and the importance of visitors to this area. Sure, partly because I'm in the industry. Every month, I read monthly reports from hotels in areas such as Hopewell, King George, that rely in what they do, what it does to them to have sports events that visit on the weekends. Partly because I'm a sports mom. My two daughters, um, were club members. One was a swimmer, one was a rower. They both went on to do so in college. I went all across this country. Have you heard of Geneva, Ohio? Most people haven't because there's hardly anything there but an aquatic center, a track, many other things. But yet people flock there. And once you get there, there's nothing to do but the sports. But people come there every year and pour thousands of dollars into their economy. And so I have been frustrated for years because I've gone all across this country spending thousands of dollars on sports tourism, on retail shops, grocery stores, restaurants, attractions. Because I have to tell you, I've dragged siblings along. So yeah, if I had an opportunity to go to Busch Gardens at night and see Christmystown, you bet those kids that have been sitting in that pool or sitting at that venue, I'm gonna take them and I'm gonna buy that ticket. Or I'm gonna have the grandmother that's with me on the day that they're off, go to Colonial Williamsburg or Jamestown or Yorktown. I have, um, as I said, grocery shopped, restaurant- I have, as I said, grocery shops, restaurants, attractions. I didn't stop. Once my children graduated from high school, I followed their teams when they were in college, whether they liked it or not. I went again, all across this country and spent money in hotels, not one night, not two, usually three, sometimes four. And I'm not alone at all. Most every parent in the club that we were with did this, and in college did that also. You know, last meeting, I didn't join in on the enthusiasm about the fact that we have not supported an aquatic center. I find it, quite frankly, really upsetting that our high school students have to go to Hampton for a high school meet. I find it upsetting that our, we can't, in our rec center here in James City County, you can't dive in, you can't truly get a competitive experience. Because to save money, we cut out that part of the rec center. I find it upsetting that two of our club teams here, one that we heard about tonight that brought in 1,500 room nights at a meet earlier this month, have to practice outdoors because we don't have an aquatic center that can accommodate all the number of people that want to swim. I find it upsetting that we don't have a performance arts center. If it wasn't for the Williamsburg Community Chapel, I don't know where the Williamsburg Symphony would hold their events. I don't know where our schools would hold their convocation. We are a rich community, but yet we have no place for crowds to gather to support so many of the rich things that we have to offer. I don't think that's okay, frankly. I'm quite bothered by that. So the fact that we can do something regionally where we might have an opportunity to at one point do a performance arts center, or to bring people into an indoor facility in cases of a clement weather, or possibly hold a convocation, by the way, that convocation had to be online this year because the school system has outgrown even the Williamsburg Community Chapel. So we don't have a place for our schools to gather all of their people together at the beginning of the year. If you watch the newspaper at the beginning of the year, you will see that all these other places around us, they have that opportunity. We don't offer that. I volunteered to serve as a representative of the Tourism Council as soon as it was announced. We can not, you know, there's lots of, I know, discussion around how the 1% tax came to be. And we may not agree on the process that was used to get to that 1% tax. But something about that 1% tax is that it is shared. It is shared by the visitors that come here. They share, that is a tax that is shared across. And so when I sit in that Tourism Council meeting with representatives from attractions, museums, restaurants, hotels, motel, and I hear about the investments that they have made in our community, I ask myself, what investment have we made back in them? And this gives us an opportunity to do so. Just for a little bit, you know, the 1% sales tax, half of that goes to marketing, goes into the Visit Williamsburg. That's what that money is. We had not seen, you can argue about the way Senator Norman went about it, but the rea, I've never, I've not talked to him about it, but I believe that the reason that he went about that is because this area had not seen an increase in visitation since 2007. In 2019, we saw an increase for the first time in this area in visitation. So we know that the marketing dollars that we put in to that have paid off. The return on the investment is tremendous. Then, of course, we had COVID. But last year, we were back, higher visitation than we saw in 2019, and we're on track for the same thing this year. So yes, we have diversified our economy. We've been trying to do that. We approved a piece of property out in the Stonehouse District that we're hoping to do that with. We have worked to diversify our economy. But bottom line, tourism is what we are. And so we need to support that as well. With all due respect, I want to go to a restaurant and not have a crowd. Our restaurateurs can't make it without attracting new people and visitors. So I would just ask that we consider some things like that, and that we do owe those that have, once again, invested in our economy, that we now invest in theirs by doing something with this. And that we also look at the fact that we are providing much-needed field space for our own citizens and our children, who frankly, we have failed. We have been sitting with a blank, with an empty lot, much-promised softball fields for years. I'm tired of it. I hope that we reap from this and we're able to continue to give more opportunities for our children here in this area. And I think those sports teams that have done it, and I think our Parks and Rec, who have done everything they can do to try to accommodate the huge number of people who play sports in our community. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify for the record that the motion includes both resolutions. So it's one for the main funding agreement, and then the other is the subsidiary funding agreement.
Right. So it says that the approval of the resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute funding agreements, plural. So that would include both. Thank you. And that was, yes, you have something to add before we vote.
Yeah, before we vote, if we, if I have an opportunity. I'll tell you, it's, I have some serious reservations, as you all know. Articulated them two weeks ago. They haven't changed. I do apologize if you feel, and apparently several of my fellow board members do, feel it was a cheap shot. My intent was to inform our citizens of my concerns, concerns which I expressed in the meeting two weeks ago. And I would hope that we could have a public hearing of those concerns and that while you, my fellow colleagues, may or may not share those concerns, that's, that's okay. That's your right. I respect your right to your opinions. And I respect your right to share your opinions with the public without necessarily having to have my consent, especially since we have discussed most of these things very in-depth. So it was not, if not, was not intentional. I felt that it was, you know, something that I felt I needed to do to express what my concerns were to my constituents. I still didn't get a lot of the answers that I wanted until right at the very end. And I'll discuss that, and just briefly, very quickly, but despite the fact that we may hold differing opinions, that we've gotten along well, and I do hope that that would continue. But it's critically important that we have a vigorous debate on the issues and we fully involve our constituents. And I think the opportunity to involve our constituents is what I was looking at. I will go back and ask, highlight a couple of things that I think were said tonight that I think may be a little misleading. And that is that, you know, we have, as we mentioned, Senator Norman's bill, which essentially set up the 1%, but it also set up $2 million worth of what's called maintenance of effort money. Now, I want to remind the public that prior to his bill, that money came out of our general fund, and it was at our discretion to provide that to the tourism industry, which we did. That discretion was taken away from us. It's no longer at our discretion, but it's still our taxpayers' general fund revenues that go to pay it. It comes out of our general fund. Of that, one, $542,000 is James City County that goes to the recreation facility. And it will be used for capital, for paying off, paying down the debt. It's going to be $2.5 million worth of city money and about $1.5 million worth of shared money amongst three jurisdictions that was set aside by this bill, that we no longer have the ability to say, yes, we want, want to do it, or no, we don't. And it goes on in perpetuity, in perpetuity. So that is a commitment that we are making, in addition to the operating function. So that the idea that the city of Williamsburg is doing all of the capital is not really totally correct. We all have a stake in that, in that game. When we look at what we're going to spend, our $800,000 plus that $542,000, it's about $1.3 million on, at the top end. And what do we get back from that? By jurisdiction, the information we didn't get back until just right before the weekend, is that James City County will realize little less than $300,000. So yes, it does generate 42,000 home room nights across the historic triangle, 12,000 in James City County. It does benefit our tourism industry. It benefits our hotels. It benefits our restaurants in that it generates revenue for them. But the incremental tax revenue that we get back for it, from it, for the citizens to help offset our $1.3 million expense, is about 30 cents on the dollar. So the question then becomes, what are we doing with the other million? Is that a justifiable expense of what we want, what we want to spend our money on? I'll tell you that I, it comes right down to it, that's, that's just a value judgment. If you think we need to be spending a million dollars and of unreimbursed in order to provide that facility, then that's a decision this board will make. I'm not sure that it's in the best interest of our taxpayers. The other real concerns I have is that there's no exit strategy. When you vote on this tonight, it is, it goes forward in perpetuity. There is no, no way out. The benefits to the tourism industry far outweigh the benefits to the taxpayer. And I think that it's probably not an adequate return on their investment. So that's, those are the concerns I still have. Thank you.
Yeah, and I understand those, and I understand the other side of the coin, too, is if, if we lose all our industry, then we have no tax period. So there's always that, too. If we're going to put the big bad wolf out there, well, you know, you could do this. But you also lose all your industry and, you know, which is not likely to happen. But it's the same scare thing that, well, if we lose our restaurants and our hotels and all that, then all that tax revenue we're getting is gone forever. And so all we can do is what we have in front of us and try to move the needle forward to hopefully fill in some of these gaps that Ruth was talking about as far as where we're missing on some of these items that we can promote for our children and the industry and everything else. So, but we've got a motion on the floor, and unless anyone else has, and I want to stop anybody from having their say while we're open.
I would just like to say, finally, it does benefit more than the tourism industry. It's going to benefit hundreds of thousands of children who are participating in sports, which is a healthy way to live. So thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, motion two for approval of the resolution to authorize the county administrator to execute funding agreements. It's on, it's motion from Sadler, and we're ready for a roll call.
Mr. Eisenhour?
No.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
No.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I ask for a recess, please?
You did ask for a form.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We'll go into recess for a few minutes.[1477.47] We'll come in from recess and next item is number five. An ordinance to amend, uh, recordation, chapter seventeen sewer and sewer and sewage of the code of James, of, of the code, the county of James City County, Virginia, by amending and renaming Article One, reserved section seventeen dash one, dash seventeen, dash seven, reserved to Article One. Alternate discharge sewer system, section seventeen dash one, definition, section seventeen dash two. Limitations on the use of alternate discharge sewer systems, section seventeen dash three, James City County. Alternative discharge sewer system permit, section seventeen dash four. Alternate discharge sewer system maintenance and testing, section seventeen dash five. Availability, availability of a sanitary and other sewer disconnections and alterations discharge sewer systems and section seventeen dash six, dash seventeen, dash seven, reserved. Revised, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this is the first time we've added a big section to the county codes, so I'm sorry for that very long title. Um, as the board will recall from a recent meeting, we had several citizens that came out and spoke during public comment and requested that the board consider allowing the use of alternate discharge sewer, sewage systems or ADSS on properties they owned in the upper end of the county. Uh, following that contact and his supervisor Hippel met with these citizens and requested that staff draft an ordinance permitting the limited use of ADSS in the county for the board's consideration, which is what's before you tonight. In summary, ADS systems, ADSS systems are highly regulated by the Commonwealth through the Departments of Health and Environmental Quality. Localities are not required to permit them, but they may do so and many do so on a limited basis. The proposed ordinance before you limits the use of ADSS in only those situations where the property is located outside of the primary service area. And the health department determines that an existing sewage system serving an existing structure has failed and there are no other alternative available to the homeowners. And finally, that the Board of Supervisors grant a permit for the ADSS system. Once permitted, the homeowners would have to submit copies of yearly testing results to the JCSA and the county stormwater division and allow the JCSA and the county to inspect the system to ensure that it's working properly. If the system is not performing as it should, the owner is required to repair the system or risk revocation of the board's permit. Finally, if the JCSA or the county provides a sanitary or other sewer system within two hundred feet of the property served by ADSS, the property owner would have to hook into that system within a year. Should the board desire to allow ADSS systems in the county, staff believes that this ordinance strikes a balance between granting homeowners this option while still protecting the county's interest in the environment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Basically, um, would be a, a way of, uh, preventing, um, sort of pressure for, or at least alleviating pressure for connection, um, to our sewer system.
I believe so, sir. That or, or what we believe is probably happening too are just continued operation of failed septic systems. And this provides an option for somebody other than a pump and haul. Um, the, the pump and haul system is where a truck comes and, and removes the waste and takes it off property. You're really only supposed to do that for a year.
Right, that only gives them a year. So, you know, if they leave the systems like they are, then there's no controlling of what is leaching out of the ground and going to our waterways. But if we do this, we at least know that the product that's coming out is okay to be put into the waterways. It's not an actual sewer discharge like you would think, you know? So this was the option that we looked at as far as how we could negotiate a way to, so somebody can stay in their home. And then if there, if we do have any systems and I've, I've asked Doug to look into a couple of areas of our, our way that maybe it can be some type of system that takes the affluent off the system, leaves the solids there and just takes the affluent off, which is the, the fluids and pushes that up to the, to, um, possibly our, um, sewer system. But we'd have to look at different options and costs and that's why, and Doug's gonna look into that and then bring that back to the, um, board for the service authority to review and, and see what options we may have, if any, or what options we have if there are some. That makes, did I explain that properly?
So how many people could you possibly have doing this?
So the, the way the Virginia code is written, they have to be separated by a certain distance between them. Um, I, I would say as many as could do it, but there's gonna be such a limited circumstance. This is not an inexpensive option. You have to have an existing house. It has to be outside the PSA. You have to have a failed system. Most of those will have a failed septic system. Then they have to try the alternative, um, treatment system, which is the A O S S, the Alternative On-Site Septic System. When that fails, then they can go to the ADSS system. So basically, you're gonna have to go through three, two failed septic systems before you get to this one, which in and of itself, itself is very expensive. So I guess in theory, I could say probably one of every three houses. The way, like if you're looking at the Haven because they're pretty close, it's about one of, out of every three, one of about every four. Um, I forget, we, we did a map.
Five hundred feet.
About five hundred feet, so, um, it's a, it's a physical distance that has to be between them and there's also going to be a financial distance because it's very expensive to do. I don't think this is not a first option for anybody.
It won't be an option as far as somebody wants to build a house and they have a sys-, you know, they, they wanna put a si-
Right.
No, we'll just do this.
Has to be existing. Yeah, and what's the impact? I mean, I realize it's clean, but there must be some environmental, there's no environmental impact?
As long as it's working, I mean, I did as much research as I could on, on the system. The, the, the difference between that and, and a septic system is you have, in a septic system, you have a tank that takes care of the solids. Your liquid effluent goes into the drain field and seeps down through the ground where that's your secondary form of treatment. In this system, it's all contained within one. So you have your solids within one chamber, it moves over, you have your liquids that are then treated through, but I think it's like, some of them have biofilms and a, and a bunch of different media. And then there's finally an ultraviolet, um, light that then blasts whatever's left of the microbes out and then you have essentially clean water coming out of the system. If all of that is working, it works great. And that's why we want to make sure that you have yearly testing to make sure someone's not allowing this to, um, not operate at its fullest potential.
And is, do we have better regulations in terms of, um, restricting future development that would ultimately wind up in this kind of situation?
We do now. Most of these are, are houses that were, were platted and built long ago and we wouldn't, would certainly not let them do that now. This is sort of making up for, for past, not mistakes, but past approvals that we wouldn't do.
And we're putting some extra precautions in place so that we make sure that somebody doesn't go down to health department and they say, oh, sure. And no, you have to go through James City County and you have to follow these and, and the alternative systems, you're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars in, in that system. And, um, they, they, they claim you can drink the water when it comes through there, but.
You didn't bring a cup with you.
I didn't bring a cup.
As not more people here.
I know.
Yeah.
What's the, um, um, what's the concern? You know, you, you've got a lot of pla-, a lot of lots that were platted like this that you said. Um, we, any of these lots that were platted that, that, um, in previous years that haven't been built on yet. Um, the only restriction on building on them is that they would be required to go through the normal septic system, have it fail. The, the secondary, second sys-, system and have it fail before they got to this tertiary one. So it's, it's, it's just, it's not that we have the ability to say no. It's that if we do this, we have the ability to, it, it's gonna require them to make a huge investment to get there. Is that correct?
That with three systems, you're at least in the six-figure range before they get here and, and ask for a permit. Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, then I'll go ahead and, and open up a public hearing. Any speaker cards? Close of public hearing. Can't believe nobody's speaking. And, um, look for the board for direction or a motion or, you wanna bring it forward? All right, I'll make a motion for approval. I'll save y'all. Motion for approval. Roll call, sir.
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Those were not over enthusiastic eyes.
No, they weren't. Um.
Yeah, the, yeah, the lack of enthusiasm.
That we've got board considerations, board requests and directives. Any, anybody have anything? I know we're getting a late hour and I don't want to keep anybody if they wanna save till the first of the year.
Just, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. Go ahead, Jim, sorry.
I have one request and, and one little thing that I wanted to pass out. Uh, one request is I would like to, uh, ask, um, uh, the county administrator and county attorney to take a look at what I found to be already on the books, which is that we do have a red light camera ordinance. Okay? Um, and I, I, I had a constituent ask me about, uh, people running red lights and whether or not we had the ability to do these cameras. And it, we found out that we actually do have an ordinance. Uh, it's just never been implemented. Um, and so I'm asking for two things. Number one, uh, I would ask that the, uh, county staff, uh, and county attorney, uh, review our ordinance to make sure we are, um, up to date with, uh, all, everything with the state law. So that our ordinance, uh, if there are any amendments that need to be made, that we can do that to bring it up to speed. Secondly, I would ask that the, uh, county come back to, uh, us and give us a, uh, an update on, um, where, a study of where it would be most effectively used. I understand we are allowed one camera per ten thousand, uh, so we have seven, seven cameras, I think we're allowed. Um, uh, how, how this program would be implemented, how it would be operated and, uh, what the, our accident investigation and, and, um, uh, ticketing, uh, from our police, uh, would indicate, uh, where we ought to place these things. Um, and for the board's consideration, uh, whether we press on with it or not, but I think we need to have that information first before we make a decision to, to, um.
The cost on those as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, so can I just follow up on his and say that, um, that I am also and have been for a couple of years interested in, um, our ability to use the same sort of technology in school zones? Um, it frees up a officer and I believe we do have an issue in our school zones. And so I would be interested in, um, getting information on that as well. Thank you, sorry, John.
That's good.
And I, I had one other thing and I'll, and this is the picture, uh, it's, you see it on your thing. Um, the Home for the Holidays, uh, program, we, uh, were able to raise enough money to provide forty-three young enlisted servicemen at, uh, the Naval Weapons Station and the Coast Guard Station with three hundred dollar Christmas stipends for getting, going home for the holidays. And this was the, uh, the award ceremony that we held at the, uh, Coast Guard Station. Uh, and we see the commander on the right and the executive officer on the left and, uh, a, a bunch of, uh, very happy, uh, young service people. And I, I, I wanna thank everyone who participated in the, in the program and made donations. Uh, it's very worthwhile and this was the pleasant result we get. Thank you.
Great job.
Great job.
Great job on that.
And on the chambers part to put that together.
Yep.
Um, I had two, two quick things. One is, um, uh, it seems as if we are gonna have several new members of the planning commission next year. Uh, I met with a couple of planning commissioners last week and just asked what they thought about, um, what would make, um, new members of the planning commission feel more, um, connected and so forth. And they suggested that there ought to be a more formalized onboarding process for planning commissioners. I think that's a, a, a really good idea. I also thought that it might be a great idea for us to maybe have an opportunity informally as board members, maybe two-on-two, um, to meet with some of our new planning staff because there's been a lot of turnover in planning. Um, and it would be good for us to get a little bit more perspective on who our new, uh, planners are and for them to get a little bit more sense of what we're, uh, thinking about and, and looking at when we consider cases. Um, so just those, uh, ideas in relation to the planning, uh, staff and commission. Um, not that, not that they're not doing a great job, but I think it would be helpful for us to get a better sense of, of, uh, other. And, uh, for the planning commissioners, I think, you know, if they're gonna be, be expected to jump right into a number of cases, they, um, probably need some help in terms of for information, advice, guidance and whatever.
Trees.
Yeah, more trees, more trees, thank you.
I forgot it.
Thank you. A constituent gave me the first tree, so they were down to ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
I got one I need to put in the ground. I'm ready to put it in.
And, uh, the, um, uh, other thing that I just wanted to, to say was, uh, you know, in, uh, the middle of the holidays that we're, uh, uh, in right now, um, to those who celebrate Hanukkah, wish, uh, them, uh, by a celebration of a very difficult time that, that, uh, uh, many people are, uh, experiencing right now with, uh, concerns about world peace and the like. Uh, and to those who will be celebrating Christmas, uh, or other seasonal events, Kwanzaa, uh, hope that their holiday seasons will be bright, cheerful and filled with good family and fun, uh, and a little bit of rest.
What did we, we, I had brought up once before about, uh, PC pay. Did we ever do any, and I apologize that I don't know the answer to that. I can't remember. Did we ever look at that? Because I think we had talked about that the planning commissioners hadn't.
I've got it as a, a possible retreat topic. We have talked about it, it came from a different board where they were paid for training purposes, a, a stipend of such. And so I've got that on a list. so I've got that on a list to talk about, but we haven't made a decision to do that, yes or no at this point.
Right, because I don't think that they've had a adjustment in a long time.
They're, they're one of our few boards that does get a pay. We didn't talk about increasing theirs in particular. We talked about payment to other boards, but to me, those topics sort of go together.
Okay.
Some localities do pay other boards and commissions a smaller amount.
Um, so just, um, I attended a breakfast that was put on by the Newport News Shipbuilding. And I would like to bring this up again at another time, because I doubt our viewership's that great at five of nine, but, um, they put it on for, for government, um, and community and education, and it was a packed room, um, down in Newport News, and it was about the, um, issue that they are having with getting qualified employees. And as they put it, it is a matter of national security. Um, they plan to hire, I believe, twenty-one thousand people in the next five years, and they need people now. Um, so the cry and call was to make sure that we were aware and we were doing what we could do to encourage people, um, to consider, um, working for the Newport News shipyard, considering a trade, considering something like their apprentice program, their apprentice school, where you get paid, um, to go to school while you're learning a trade. Um, you, you leave there with the associates, um, but they will continue to help you to get your bachelor's if that's what you decide to do. If school, if, if, uh, um, college is not where you want to go, but you want to learn a trade, they want to help you with that. So they also have some legislative priorities, one being trying to get, um, Virginia to recognize trade, um, as, as a credit course when you're in high school, so that, you know, that'll help get you out and, you know, that you'll have more kids that want to, to do this. But it's just something that we need to also consider as we look at the number, um, of students that we can put into New Horizons, because I think every year we have many more students apply than there are spaces for. Um, but there's just all kinds of ways that you can, um, go talk to them about, um, employment. And if anyone's interested, I am happy to pass along the information that I got from them. But they are really looking to hire. We heard from, um, military, um, officers, we heard from union, we heard from the president of the shipyard. Um, so this is a very important topic. Uh, and I just joined Supervisor McLennan and wishes for the holiday season, for however you may celebrate that.
Right, I'm the same way. Merry Christmas to everyone, and however you celebrate it, please have fun, enjoy yourself, enjoy your family, take a little time off and, and just relax. So blessings to everybody, and however they celebrate their Christmas is theirs, and, and I wish them all very well.
County Administrator report.
Airborne, I don't have anything to report this evening, and I would say of your closed session, if those are easy appointments for you, great. If you'd rather defer them to January, I don't think there's anything that would matter.
I'd like to roll them over to January. All right, let's roll them over to Jan. Do we need a motion for that, I guess? Motion, we roll them over. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McLennan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
All right, next we'll need a German until four P M. on January ninth, twenty twenty-four for an organizational meeting.
We don't need to do anything about tomorrow, right?
No. We shouldn't, we shouldn't, because we're, we'll be in and out. So, okay.
Or unless, make it social. Okay. Gosh, all right.
One-on-one. All right, motion for?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get y'all out of here. Motion on the floor.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McLennan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
That's it. We're adjourned.
Okay, call to order this, uh, meeting of the Board of Directors for the James City Service Authority.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. McLennan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel. Ms. Eisenhour.
Uh, presentations, we have our twenty-three fiscal analysis of, uh, audit, executive summary.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna introduce Mr. Rob Churchman, who is a partner with Cherry Beckhardt, um, who did our audit this year. This is the first year this firm has done our audit. Um, and by the way, they'll be the firm doing the county's audit too, but he's here tonight to present the James City Service Authority budget.
I'm sure he is just so happy. He took on this class.
So, uh, with no further ado, I introduce Mr. Churchman.
Five years, I've been longer meetings, I've gone to midnight, and then tabled me to the next meeting. But thankfully, gentleman back here was able to find me a desk, and I was able to keep working on the WADA audit and the EDA audit and everything else that relates underneath you. So, um, I'm, we're new to you, so I'm not sure exactly how you've done this in the past. I've looked at your minutes and kind of got a feel for it, but I have, it looks like a long PowerPoint. I don't read every page, I don't read every not thing on the PowerPoint. My PowerPoints are made so that somebody who's not even here can look and get, can get the core guts of what they need to know about an audit. And the audit standards require me to talk to you either in this format or in a written format at the end of each audit, regardless of whether you are IBM, uh, Not-for-Profit Hospital, or something like that. So the standards are the same across the board. So there's gonna be things in my presentation that I have to say, do relate or don't relate, because standards don't want me to, to maybe forget something, and you're up there saying, well, Rob talked about this a lot three years in a row, but didn't talk about tonight. What's, is that something that's changed, or something he just forgot, or something he didn't tell us and so forth? So I'm gonna go relatively quickly, because I know you're all hungry, and I'll keep this away from my stomach, because it'll probably grumble a little bit. Can I just, do I just use this? Okay. Oh, that's fast. Okay. Oh, no, I probably just click. No, I have to scroll. Okay. Again, my presentations are made for people that aren't here, and so somebody can pick it up, people see it online and so forth. Um, I'm not gonna cover every single bullet point, because I know you don't want people up here sitting here talking to you, reading exactly what they've written down on the piece of paper for you, but I'm gonna give you the core of how the audit went in these key areas. My client service team, significant audit matters. And I will say, there are some, some words in here that are, that are basically border plate from the standards. They look kind of ominous. You'll see the word disagreement. You'll see difficulties and so forth, and I'll, I'll cover those, but I won't take all your time. So let's move on to core audit team. Uh, we have lots of people that are serving, uh, JCSA, the county, WADA, uh, juvenile detention and so forth. Uh, here are the core players. I'm the engaging holder in charge of all services. Each one of our engagements has a second partner. Their job is to be a quality reviewer and kind of keep at thirty thousand feet, looking for key areas that, because when we were down on the ground, down in the weeds, sometimes you can't see, you know, the forest for the trees. That's what, that's what Laura does for me. Mike Reinhardt is our senior manager, and Lisa Gore is our, our key audit in charge senior. Here's the most important page for you. We have audited the authority statements, found them to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Again, I use the word material, because we don't audit down to every single dollar. You'd, you'd never get it out, you'd never get us out of here. We also, because of the way you get some funding, we had to do audit procedures over government auditing standards, and also for the APA specifications that is put out by the Audit of Public Accounts each, each year. We found no material weaknesses in the, um, we call it yellow book report, government audit standards, and we found no, no matters of compliance I need to report to you from either that, um, area, yellow book, or the APA specifications. What you want to hear from your auditor? Looking ominous, right? Corrected, uncorrected statements. I have clients where this page goes for several pages, and those would be areas where we found something that needed to be fixed in order to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Nothing like that happened here, but again, I have to positively affirm that to you each year. One thing changed in your policies this year, it wasn't your fault, it was thrust upon you by the, those who set GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. And just like last year, when you had to take into consideration some new, some new requirements on leases, this year, what I call the, the foggy leases, it's, it's, everything's in the cloud. And so you have some, you have some subscriptions leases that you have gotten into. An example of those could be like Microsoft's licensers and so forth. So last year, you had, I'll call tangible hard things, you can put your hands on leases, and this year you had cloudy leases that you had to record, very relatively immaterial, but I have to tell you that that changed. Nothing else that we saw change from your policies from prior years. Skip one. Related parties. I'm not gonna go through this whole, this whole list here, but basically because entities get into relationships, and sometimes their relationships are confusing and not properly disclosed, and therefore maybe not properly accounted for, us as auditors are required to keep our minds open and, and understand the relationships you have with who you work with, and make sure that it makes sense to us that those relationships make sense. If you're in a, it's a relationship for something that you should have as, as a service authority. Um, you know, not like Bitcoin, not like FTX, where, where Sam, um, you know, got thirty-six billion dollars of loans from Alameda Research, which was never disclosed to anybody when they ever, they invested into the fund. Um, that's what ultimately took him under. We saw nothing like that here. We saw nothing that made us think that you have some related party relationships that needed to be further disclosed to the reader. Also, there can be times when you could have a significant or unusual transaction from year over year, and if that comes up, we're required to look at it, make sure we understand it, make sure it appears that it's been disclosed properly in the financials and so forth. Saw nothing like that here, but I do have some clients sometimes where they may get into a, an unusual relationship with, or a new-to-them relationship, maybe with, um, private, public, and so forth, getting some funding and getting something in place and so forth. Nothing like that happened here. Every set of statements has an estimate, unless you're doing a school activity fund or a lemonade stand. Uh, not everything can be tied to a bank, bank statement, a bank invoice and so forth. So we're required to look at your estimates, and this is one that's really global across all of, all the entities, because estimates in non-governments are really important, because that's a one way people can play with getting more salaries, by playing with the bottom line and reducing their taxes and so forth. So we have to look at your estimates, make sure they make sense to us, make sure they're consistent, comparable, they're, um, they're consistent with your peers. If you were saying that you're getting twenty-five percent return on your investments, and everybody else is getting three, that would might be something we need to look into further and understand. Maybe you bought Apple on ground floor? Great. Um, but we found nothing that, that gave us any pause about the estimates you do, and your key ones you really have are depreciation expense, and then all your actual determined, um, liabilities and so forth. Simple statement they always want me to make, whether or not it's true, if it's true or not, we found the statement disclosures neutral, clear, and consistent. Left-hand side doesn't matter to you, but if I ever did any special work for you that wasn't audit-related, I'd have to tell you about it. Doesn't happen here. Happens at the county, because the county has one document the feds require that both I and they certify that the information is, is accurate in going up to, to the same website and so forth. So, but doesn't happen here. Right-hand side is what's more important. If I ever knew of anything that was going on that we were not independent of you, um, the pieces of paper I gave that are inside the bound document would be useless. If I'm not independent, my firm's not independent, my staff aren't independent, the relationships we have with, with other companies that we work with aren't independent, then that would create an objectivity issue, and I could not be relied upon. Nothing like that happened here, but I have to positively affirm that to you. Had it once or twice in my thirty-five-year career doing governments, uh, actually happened when my wife was working for Circuit City. We got him as a client, I had to sell all the stock. She was roy mad. She's still mad to me at that day, but I had to do it, because it was reality, and also could be perception.
She's mad because you sold your stock in Circuit City?
It wasn't that much, but we were, you were young, out of school, and you know, when you sell ten thousand dollars, uh, and you're twenty-three years old, it means like, oh, man.
Mad if you bought the stock.
Well, it was going good. She, she was on the ground floor, she started CarMax.
Right.
Her and a handful of people. So, I mean, we were on the ground floor or something, so, but she never lets me do that down, though. These next two slides, I'm not gonna go into all of these, but I'm just gonna tell you that they're written again, so anybody who wants to see what's going on here, they can actually get a true feeling for it. There was no difficulties encountered with us during the audit. There was no disagreements from management on how to, how to record something, disclose something. I will say I do have clients where those two items are three pages long. So the positive result you want to hear from me. If I ever went outside of my audit team, that maybe to a valuation expert or something like that, to try and make sure your assets are right, I'd have to tell you about that. That didn't happen here. That's the third one. And then the fourth one is a letter that is required by the standards from you to me, well, from management to me, basically representing to me, um, very standard border plate items that are very, very, help you with insomnia, they'll put you down. But if you weren't going to represent those to me, I'd have to worry about what I don't know about could impact my opinion. There's things like, they're your financial statements. They're not ours. We give you an opinion. Uh, all legal matters, um, any maybe federal monitoring that came down bad, something like, which could have, could have impacted accrual disclosure. They didn't ask me to change any of those. Um, so just telling you that positive came back as I needed it, and we are good there. And then the last of the key ones. Far-left one is really, happens in commercial entities more than anywhere else, shopping the opinion. If my client comes to me and says, I want to do this, and I say, no, you can't do this, not GAAP, they say, oh, I'm gonna go talk to CPA from two, CPA from three, four, five, maybe, maybe birdie made us CPA. And if they finally get the answer they want, then they're gonna change, change auditors. If I ever had that happen, I'd have to tell you about it. Again, because you're charged with governance, you don't, you wouldn't necessarily know all this stuff was going on. So not, not a relevant issue here. We talk during the year. Um, all the talk we do is, is straightforward. It's about auditing, it's about counting and so forth. If we were having discussions during the year on, on other matters, then I'd have to bring those to you and tell you that here's the topic areas we've been talking about and why we've been talking about them. Last two look ominous. Fraud, illegal acts, going concern. Fraud, we're not required to look for fraud, unless you tell me, Rob, come in here, something doesn't look right. I had clients do that. Um, but we're not required to go looking for it. Required what's called professionally skeptical. And that means if I'm doing some work and something seems odd, early or, uh, late, oh, early this century, no, when Isabel came up the James River and flooded all, all Virginia, um, City Richmond, uh, chief of staff for city council decided to make up half a dozen fake companies, uh, make up their own invoices, submitted a million dollars worth of invoices to the city, got paid the million dollars. We found it by doing our normal procedures, we were looking at invoices to support capital asset and CIP work, and this person spelled the word debris wrong on multiple companies' invoices multiple times. Just kind of stuck in your head. It just looks weird. And so we got in touch with her internal audit, we worked together, peeled back the onion. They found stacks of money in his freezer, they found new car and stuff, so, um, but we weren't going looking for it, but we were keeping our minds open and being smart about how we're doing our procedures and so forth. So nothing like that happened here, but again, just I had to tell you positively affirm that to you. And going concern really doesn't impact governments, it's really the corporate entities. Um, it does happen once in a while. Um, basically sometimes when a town folds back into a county and so forth, that's called a, the town goes out of existence and basically becomes part of the county. Doesn't happen here. No indications here that you're going out of business within, within the next twelve months. I, I wasn't here for the whole meeting. I was just, just some of it online. I didn't hear anything to make me think you're going out of business in the next twelve months. These next three slides, I'm not gonna go over with you, but they are basically, oh, boy, this thing is touchy, doesn't like me. These are actual copies of three paragraphs out of my opinion. They're the standard, uh, paragraphs, and what they're basically telling the reader, a lot of times people read the first page of my opinion, which is three pages now, and that's all they look at, because the first section's what's my opinion. And they think, well, I'm not caring about all this other stuff behind there. But there are other than these in your financial statements that, there's an upfront section that talks to the reader about how things went through the year, gives a listing of directors and so forth. There's a back section that has historical trends, stat tables, and this is just telling the readers what we, what assurance we're giving you, uh, under the standards, since not my, not my decisions, what the standards say, what assurance I'm giving you on those key areas that are part of the overall bound document. And this last one, I'm not gonna talk to you at all, but basically let you know, the people up in Norfolk, Connecticut that are behind the, uh, the Oz, behind the curtain, they're always coming up with more things to keep them justified and keep them, keep their positions in place. So they have some changes coming down the line for governments. Really, the only one in there that would impact you would be one-on-one. It's just some more, um, consistent, comparable disclosures and so forth for compensated absence. They haven't had a change to that since, I think it was ninety-four. I was pretty fresh out of school. So they're kind of updating that, because things have changed a lot over the years, obviously, with benefit plans you're giving your people and so forth. The other two are really innocuous, especially the, the orange one. That's just letting you know that I have some new, new changes to what I'm gonna have to be doing going forward under the standards. And those are my required communications, except for the last slide was not required, but since I have those, those charts of governance in front of me, I'd like to let you know what, uh, things are coming down the pike. Until the, finally. Unusual for me, because I do a lot, I do a lot of teaching at conferences and so forth, and I love to just tell stories to get, to get the point across.
I can tell.
Are there any questions? Best thing is that there, all these things you said, none found.
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay. Perfect job to our, well, good job to our staff, too.
Again, however you, however you undertake.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Appreciate that. Um, I'd recommend that the board accept the fiscal year twenty-three audit.
For a motion?
A move.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. McLennan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel. Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
What's, uh?
Next item is minutes. It's consent calendar, which is just minutes.
Of the adoption of the consent calendar.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got that.
Other than that, we have no public hearings, no board considerations. Are there any board requests and directives?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Same to you.
So you, um, we have a luncheon on Wednesday.
Thursday for the JCSA.
Yes, and is that separated from the county one this year?
Yes, yes, there's, there's, well, the, the county is kind enough to include us in, in their luncheon, so, um, but yes, so there's the county luncheon on Wednesday, and then there's a service story lunch on Thursday.
JCSA say it.
At both.
On, on that county one as well.
Yes, yes.
And I told you I was gonna make that, but I'll be at HR tack and all.
Okay.
We gotta leave down here at six-thirty in the morning, so I won't be.
Okay, understand. I will give, I'll give the staff your regrets.
Please do.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have, I have nothing else.